Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Phillips Town Planning Board meeting for December 16th. Peter Lewis will lead us in the pledge. If you could all stand as soon as Cecilia puts the flag up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I say I am America.
To the Republic which stands unashamed, invincible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So. So I guess Cheryl, if you could take the role.
Sure. Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon. Peter Lewis.
Here.
Laura O'Connell.
Here.
Neil Toman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Neil Zuckerman will be here shortly. So the first thing is the approval for minute of minutes from the October meeting. Anyone like to make, do they have any comments, any corrections? No? Okay. In that case, if someone would like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Peter, second.
Second.
Laura and Neil, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? Okay, motion pass. So the first thing on our agenda tonight is the Sandlon and Wensky Residential Site Plan at 825 Route 9D in Garrison. Town map number, or tax map number 71 point dash one dash thirteen point one one one. This is a minor project, development of a new single-family dwelling, accessory building, and in-ground swimming pool to be served by a new septic system and water well and related site improvement.
I think Jason has to be let in.
Okay.
So we're just waiting for Vincent Snyder. So I guess the. We'll have the, Glenn and Jason, do you want to present the project?
Actually, I believe.
If you could, if you could light up, there he is.
This is John Savan. I'll be presenting for this evening and Jason will chime in. I'm an architect and I'm also the applicant for this submission. So I'd just like to start by thanking the board for your time and consideration tonight. Our focus is going to be to share a very preliminary, high-level concept for this site. There's a number of unique qualities about the property that we want to highlight. And I'm going to be sharing my screen in just a moment with the documents that I believe the jury has already received. So let me know when this is visible.
Good.
Okay, we can see it.
Very good. So to provide a very high-level overview, this is a 20-acre parcel that is just west of Route 9D. It's basically the parcel just north of Loews Lane and south of the Town Recreation Center. And it extends from 9D to the river. We purchased this property from OSI and there is a conservation easement on the property, which also includes a trail easement, public access trail easement on the west side of the property. I'll go into a little bit more detail when we bring up the plans. So our proposal is for a single-family residence, single-story, approximately 3,600 square feet. There will be a detached garage, roughly 900 square feet for the garage, also including a 200-square-foot wood shop and also an accessory unit. So in addition to the dwellings, there will be a pool with a terrace paver area and a small cabana slash storage barn for the seasonal use of furniture and storage during the winter time. So as part of the agreement with OSI, there's a designated building envelope area. And the proposed location of all of the buildings complies with the agreement that we have in place with OSI. And I'll go into a little bit more detail in just a second. So this is a site plan. What you see outlined in red are the extents of the parcel. So to orient you, just here to the south is Loews Lane. The existing residences are indicated here in the shading. Obviously, 9D here on the west, I'm sorry, on the east, and then the recreation center is here to the north. So some of you who may be familiar with the Fish Mansion, that property is indicated with a poche in this location. So what's interesting about this property, the entry point from 9D, this upper portion. There seems to be a bit of feedback, I'm sorry. The upper portion is relatively level in terms of grade, and for all intents and purposes, that's about five acres of the property. There's a very, very steep drop-off of the property, approximately 40 to 50 feet, that occurs just west of this blue trapezoid. The trapezoid represents the agreement that we have in place with OSI, and we refer to this as the building envelope area. And so our improvements to the site in terms of the structures will be located within that trapezoid. And what you see indicated here with a red bubble, that's a little bit more detailed focus on where the buildings will be sited. Staying at a very, very high level, the public access trails through the easement with OSI enter the property at this location, just behind the Fish Mansion. And they extend along the waterfront to the tail end of the property. They loop back up to the midpoint of the property and the public access trails exit again and go up a roadway towards the recreation center. But again, the point of elevation of the trails here in this location is approximately 40 to 50 feet below the elevation of the site for the structures. There's one other item of note that I'd like to highlight, and that is Arnold's Flight. So the historic pathway enters the property here, just off of 9D. It runs along the edge of the property and then across the northern edge and then continues on down to the river. So this area of the trails is un-groomed and basically wild at this point in time, but it is of note. There are other, there's a pond and other water sources on the upper edge of the property, off of our property, just to the north. Again, at an elevation approximately 40 to 50 feet below the proposed building site. I'll continue a little bit further to give you more detail. This is a topographic survey. I understand this is a little bit hard to read, but this indicates a little bit more clearly the drop-off that I'm mentioning in this area here. And you see that once the grade changes, approximately 40 to 50 feet down, it gradually slopes back up towards the roadway. So what you see indicated here in the green are the improvements in terms of the structures. The larger rectangle in this location is the residence, approximately 3,600 square feet. There is a detached garage in this location. The garage includes approximately 900 square foot plus a 200-square-foot workshop for my tools. And then in the back, there is an accessory unit. That unit would be under 800 square feet. What you see dotted in this area, just behind the house, is the pool area. The dotted line indicates the extent of pavers that we have planned, and again, a small cabana for storage of seasonal furniture during the winter. So a few other highlights that I'd like to just mention, the setback from 9D will be approximately 400 feet to the house. And we do have intention of site improvements, whether that be fencing or other greenery, to be respectful of the scenic overlay and also the privacy of the neighboring properties. So with the conservation easement that's in place by OSI, we have every intention of honoring the conservation of this land. Our intention is only to remove trees in the primary construction site for the buildings. Outside of that 10-foot envelope of the construction site with the buildings, there's also obviously the wells, the septic, and the driveway that would connect to 9D. I do want to emphasize that although there is an existing well elsewhere on the site, it's located at the lower portion, down at the bottom of the trails at that 50-foot drop-off, we have no intention of tapping into that existing well. There will be a new well, a new septic system installed for this residence. And then finally, the driveway access is pending confirmation by the DOT. I just want to provide an update that we have submitted that application to the DOT, and we're just waiting to hear back. We've also completed the soil testing, and we also completed earlier this week a tree survey. And that documentation is just being wrapped up and will be available for your review in a very short while. I'll stop there for just a minute. Is there any questions about what I've started to present so far? Okay, I'll continue on. So just to orient you a bit to the site, three photographs. The first photograph is essentially standing at the front entryway to where the house would be located. So here you see a rather sharp edge of the drop-off of that 50, 40, 50-foot drop-off. You see the material of trees, and you see here, this is actually at the bottom of the drop-off at the public access trails, looking back up. And what I want to note is that the construction of the house will not be at the edge of this cliff, if you will. It will be set back considerably so that the sightlines from the trail are being taken into account, so as to minimize any sort of viewing of the structures. If we stand in the exact same spot of this photograph, and now we turn to the west, here you see the relatively flat grade of the public access trails, but then gradually slope back up as you get closer to the river. So as a very high-level point of reference, I want to just clarify again, this is a preliminary conceptual design package. So the details of the house are not yet sorted out, but I wanted to just share with the board tonight some inspirational references. This gives the flavor of the architecture that we will be creating on the site. So these are six different residences, but what they have in common is first and foremost, single-story construction, use of natural materials. Our palette will include wood, steel, stone, and glass. And what you see in each of these images is that the house is very much integrated within the landscape. And it's really our intention to celebrate, to enhance, to really respect the integrity of the site that's existing with minimal invasion. Getting a little bit more specific into the concept layout of the house itself, it is a three-bedroom home, which also includes an open living space, a den slash office, given that I work predominantly from home, especially in this day and time. Taking a bit of a step back, these are very preliminary elevations that show the front elevation of the home, which is in terms of the massing and the punched openings, maintains a high degree of privacy and discretion from the street view. The backside of the house that faces the woods has a significantly more, a greater portion of glass to allow our view into the woods. And I think perhaps more of interest to the planning board, this is the way that the buildings and the sighting of them will be pursued. Again, this is conceptual, and it is subject to some slight modifications on the site pending the staking that we intend to be doing in the next two weeks. But here you see the relationship of the primary residence. Here is the three-car garage. This would be my wood shop with the tools, the accessory unit in the back with the separate entrance. And of course, here then, the pool with pavers and a small cabana. So I'll stop there, and I'll be happy to field any questions that you may have.
Kim, you want to keep driving on?
All right, I couldn't find my mouse to unmute myself. So Neil, if you want to jump in, you're welcome to jump in.
No, no, no. Keep driving, it's fine. Keep going.
All right.
I'll take a bit of that.
So I guess, first of all, does anybody have any, any question? From the, on the board? Not really at this time, I imagine.
Well, I can't actually see all the structures on the screen I have open. I see the three-car garage and the main house, and then something to the left, to the left in my screen, but I don't think.
That's all, that's everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
If it's helpful, I'll go back to the site plan so that you can see the greater context of what it is.
Actually, Cheryl, can you put up my screen? It might be a little bit more of what it has the slope analysis and everything on it.
I believe John has to un-share and then you can share.
Okay. John, can we do that?
Yep, just took it.
Are we in? Okay. So here are the, here's the steep embankment towards the back of the property, which John was referring to. Here's the well down here. We're not, we're not using that well. We're not going down this, this slope at all. The pond is back here and the buffer is shown. We're not really even close to that. We do have a, so this is kind of the arrangement of the, of the driveway, of the proposed driveway preliminarily, and the structures and the septic, proposed septic preliminary and preliminary well location. We have the, we have the tree survey. I believe the fieldwork was done today. We should have it mapped soon, and at that point, we could then start to cite these improvements to preserve as much vegetation and existing trees. There's a lot of locust trees and things out there. So we want to, we want to, we want to minimize the tree disturbance. So once we have that tree survey done, we will begin to fine-tune the septic location and location of the house and driveway. So it's my goal, I mean, I guess it's one of the goals tonight to get a, to go through the, the seeker and the, and the classifying the minor, the project scope and, but also to schedule a site visit so you can get a feeling of, of the site conditions, and then that will, that will help John to, to put something together in terms of citing these improvements. If there's certain areas that you want preserved, we'll keep that in mind before we, we continue.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Jason, you've got, you've got the cutout in the property line. I see the one well you referenced towards the river, but there's another sort of jog in the property line that surrounds another well.
Correct, yep.
And what, where's, are any of those going to be recommissioned or?
Those are, those are active wells for the, for the Glencliff property and the, and the Rec Center property. So those are, those are wells that are used for those properties. This was all one property at one point?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so you're, yeah, so, so those wells are going to continue to be used for other purposes, although they're on this property. But we have a new proposed well, which, which we're going to have our own well.
So the one in the cutout is still servicing the Rec Center and the other one is out of commission?
Well, I believe, I believe this one down at the bottom is, is serving the Rec Center at the bottom of this cut. I mean, this was, I believe this was mined at one point. And then this one in the cutout, I believe that goes to Glencliff. John, maybe you know a little bit more about where each one of those wells goes.
Yeah, I'm just curious why, why, why that wasn't made part of the other property.
Because, I guess, because we needed the zoning, we need, we needed to continue, we need to, we needed to continue on through here. So that's kind of like right in the middle, because they needed the 20 acres when this was subdivided, right? So because it's the institutional conservation, I believe.
Okay, so you needed 20 acres.
Yeah, so and it's, and it's right in the middle. So there's, there was no, really no way to, I mean, I don't know, I wasn't part of that. I wasn't part of that subdivision process, so I'm, I'm not really sure what, what, what went on with that, but those are, those are to the other property. And we will make, obviously, maintain the proper separation distances from the septic system.
And one more time, Jason, where do you see the well going in where you're on the?
Well, there's a, there's a high spot right here. There's a high spot to the, kind of in between the septic and the road. So I would imagine that, that would be a good spot. I mean, it's kind of far away from the, maybe we need to, to move it around a little bit, but that's kind of like in the high spot. So I mean, we might, depending on where the, where the septic system for the garage goes, if we can, if we can squeeze it all in here, we might be able to move the well over to, to the north more. It might make sense to move it to the north more. So.
And that's all in front of the, that's all in front of the County Board of Health right now?
No, no, it's not. Well, we have all the soil, the soil testing is complete with the health department. They witnessed the testing. It's just a matter of, again, I could design something, but you know, I want to, I want to make sure that we have the right house location and, and we, you know, we have the tree plan, so you know, we don't have to, you know, I don't want to go through the, I don't want to go through the other things that we do on other projects. So I want to make sure that we have the tree plan first, and then we design around that, so we don't run into the typical problems. But it's, it's all bank run. We can put a septic anywhere here. It's, it's a 50 feet of bank run, so.
Yeah.
It's not going to be a problem.
Yeah.
Any other questions, anyone?
I have one. Oh, Peter, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. I guess the, the house itself, as I see it here on this map, is on a rise. And then to the west is that slope that you were talking about. Are you considering in your, in your tree plan, keeping trees along the top of that ridge or that, you know, that bench there to prevent, you know, any type of visual disturbance to the other side of the river or to other buildings that are to the north and south here?
So we do have intention of maintaining the existing trees on the edge, also being mindful of mitigating erosion, given the steep drop-off. What I will say is that, given that this front five acres is considerably set back from the river, and that the site, once it drops off, does continue to ascend to the same 50-foot elevation before you get tracks.
So you get a valley in there.
There is no sightline from the river of this section of the property because it's so far set back.
Okay. And the other question I had was, isn't this really two houses? An accessory unit, doesn't that have to be attached, or is it the other way around? If I got it backwards? I mean, this is really a, a living unit. It's got a bed in there and bathroom and everything.
So my understanding of the, the code is that the accessory unit is allowable if the garage itself is detached from the primary residence and that that accessory unit can be no more than one-third of the square footage of the primary residence and no more than 800 square feet. So we're well within compliance of all those code requirements and.
Yeah, you're way ahead of me there. That's great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Neil Zuckerman.
Yeah, thank you. So I was for a period of time the president of Putnam County Historical Society, and one of the few markers that that society put up, and I don't know what year it was, on the roads, is for Benedict Arnold's Flight. And it is unfortunately, I mean, historically, obviously, it's a disastrous time for the country, but it was and is one of the most important features of our community in many ways. It is also under-known, under-invested in, and as you said, overgrown and frankly, not that navigable. But being a historian at heart, I care deeply for the preservation of history. So I will be concerned that I, again, a site visit will be very important. I know you're not that, your driveway is much further south than where the marker is, but I am very concerned that marker looks like it's almost about to fall, fall over, as it already is. So I just want to, when we do the site visit, I want to just note that I'm concerned, we don't have a historical review board like the village does, but I just am concerned if it any disturbance to what is a pretty monumentally and fundamentally American location. Obviously, the Beverly Robinson House across the street is no longer looks anything like it did in the 18th century. So I just want to be mindful what we're doing in there. I don't have a specific thing because I haven't walked it in a long time, but I just, you sound like a guy who's also respectful of history. Your design looks very Frank Lloyd Wrighty. And so I, I look forward to talking to you about that on the site visit and having your thoughts about how we preserve that history.
I appreciate those comments, and I do agree. So that, that marker is at that lower portion when you come down from the recreation center. I'm sure you're still familiar. So that marker is still intact. The information is actually part of what got us excited about this property. I will say that as an architect, I spent the beginning part of my career specialized in historic preservation. And I'm extremely mindful of conservation, both of historic structures, but also of property. So I agree with all the points that you've just made, and I'll be happy to talk to you more about it when we do the walkthrough.
Thank you.
Great. Anybody else? Any comments from the board? So in that case, I'd like to ask Ron to make his comments.
Okay, thank you. I think the applicant's done a very good job of describing where the property is and the concerns that relate to the proposed development of the tract. As has been touched on, I've already had preliminary discussions with the applicant's representatives, and they are moving forward with a tree plan. The site itself is heavily wooded. And I think the intent would be to try to save as much existing vegetation as is possible, given the development constraints. So that, that tree plant is in progress. The other significant issue to consider when you accomplish a sidewalk is just to recognize its visibility from public trails that's within the SPO. So that's a matter that you'll pick up as you accomplish the, the sidewalk itself. Administratively, there's a few things you want to accomplish tonight. One is to declare the project a, a minor project pursuant to your regulations. And again, based on SEAKER regulations, you can also classify it as a type-two action, which will conclude your environmental review responsibilities. You might also wish to move forward with the necessary referrals. Down Route 9D has to go to county planning. And then lastly, as has been touched on, you might desire to schedule a, a sidewalk at this opportunity.
I just want to just say that we should, definitely should have the, the tree plan prepared at the time of the sidewalk, so I think that'll be helpful.
Great. Steve, is there anything you have to say here?
All right, I think that covers it very well.
So in that case, then I guess the first thing is to get a motion to declare this a minor project. Peter, second. Dennis, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion, any extensions? Motion pass. The next thing is to, is a type-two, correct? That we just said. Now, so to declare it a type-two under SEAKER, I can get a motion for that. Neil Zuckerman, second. Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Then next thing would be a referral to county planning. Motion for that, to that effect. Neil Toman, second. Peter, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Kim, if I could speak up for a second, there's, you'd also desire to make a referral to town conservation, just given the steep slopes on the property, and referral just to DOT, just recognizing their permitting responsibility for the driveway access.
Okay, and what about the Garrison Fire Department?
That you could make if you wish. That's right. That's, that's not required, but often done.
Yeah, we usually do that. So I have to do this separately, correct? No, do them all at once?
I think you can do them all.
If we could get a motion then to refer this to the Conservation Board, the Department of Transportation, and the Garrison Fire Department.
And county planning.
And county, we did county planning a minute ago.
I'll make the motion.
And Pete, Dennis first, Peter second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion pass. So I think that covers all four, correct? Now, is that what I said? Okay. So I guess the next thing would be to arrange a sidewalk. So we could pick dates. What do you, what do we think? January?
You're looking for a Sunday, January 2nd is right after.
You're looking for a Sunday, uh, January second is right after New Year's and then the ninth.
Um, so when's our next meeting?
Um, January twentieth.
January twentieth. So.
Will we have the tree planned by that time?
By the ninth?
Yeah. And that's to Jason, I guess.
I'll have to, I mean, yeah, we should. Glenn might be mad at me, but yeah, I think we can get it done by the night. I, we'll have it done by the ninth.
Okay. So would anyone like to make a motion that we have the site visit on the ninth, anyone who can't? I may not be able to do that, but I can figure it out. Neil? Peter, so Neil first, Peter second, all in favor?
Well, let me just, let me just say one proviso, John. Uh, if we have snow in the ground, we're not gonna go traipsing into the woods in a few inches of snow. I just think that's, we have to be mindful of that. We'll call an audible that day.
Understood. I'll be happy to provide snow shoes, but if it's postponed, that's fine.
Okay, so, um, I, so we've approved the sidewalk. January ninth, um, nine thirty AM. And I think that concludes my responsibilities at this meeting and I'm gonna hand over to Mr.
Right. Thank you very much, Kim. Good job. Thank you, John. Good evening. All right. So we've got a busy remainder of the agenda. We're gonna, we're gonna get through. We have two public hearings, Paul Hemus, and then what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call my own audible. Um, probably gonna bring up the Garrison Golf Course before we do the Hudson Highlands Reserve. I haven't decided that yet, but I may do that because I think we've been, we've a narrow scope of business to attend to on, on, uh, the Garrison Golf Course and a wider range conversation we have to have on Hudson Highlands Reserve. And I don't wanna get, get done with one and not the other, or at least start. So let's begin with our two public hearings. We have Arno and Santilis, uh, please. Cheryl, you want to read the brief, uh, uh, public hearing announcement? And then let in our applicants, please.
The Planning Board of the Town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, starting at seven thirty PM via Zoom to consider the following application. Arno and Santilis, five, Juniper Hill Road, Garrison, New York, one oh five four, tax map number eight, one dot dash one dash one one. Minor project redevelopment of a residential property with a new single-family dwelling to be served by a new septic system and private well, construction of a detached two-car garage and swimming pool. Dated at Phillips Town, New York, this eighteenth day of November, two thousand twenty-one. Neil Zuckerman, Chair.
Okay.
All right. So Cheryl, do we have the applicant in here?
Just one moment.
I think you wanted me to take it over.
Okay. Jason, you're doing, so Jason, let's just, let's just do the brief version of this, please.
Well, um, we have a, uh, we have a, uh, we're, we're demoing the, uh, the existing cottage and building a new, uh, single-family residence. We're also, uh, uh, decommissioning the existing septic system and well and building a new one. Um, we have, uh, we're utilizing the existing, uh, for the most part, the existing gravel driveway off of, uh, Juniper Hill Road. We have a, uh, Board of Health approval on the septic system and well. We have, uh, I'm not sure what Max's letter looks like, but the, uh, the Conservation Board was, was good with the, um, with the wetland mitigation, uh, plan that we had with the, uh, with the addition of a deer fence around the proposed uh, shrubs i- in the area where the, uh, where the cesspit is being abandoned. Um, they were happy with the development with respect to the, um, with respect to this, to the steep slopes on the site. Uh, we've added some, since, since you last saw the plan, uh, we've added some, uh, improvements to the, um, to the proposed affluent line. We provided a redundant affluent line so that if anything happens to the, uh, to the primary, we have, we have another one. And we've also provided some, uh, we'll encase that in Kcrete so that we can, we can plant uh, this new screening along the property line, uh, which we've also incorporated into this plan, uh, which should provide buffering uh, to the, um, to the Garrison Inn, uh, property to the, to the south. We did switch the, um, the, the primary in reserve septic system so as to preserve this area, which is to the west of, of this house, uh, over here on, on route nine. Um, so we've, I think we've, uh, so we've, we've, we've buffered, buffered the property lines and, um, that, that's about it.
All right, good. So do we have anyone from the public here? Cheryl, do you want to speak?
Um, I don't see any hands up, but if you'd like to speak, just raise your hand.
The one I see, an old friend of ours, Susan Jane Hill, on the list of attendees. That's, uh, it's a name from the past. We're excited to see you, Susan.
Yeah, no hands.
No hands? For those who don't know, Susan was with a, it was with AKRF and worked with us earlier on, uh, Hudson Highlands Reserve. Anyone else going once? Going twice? Any member of the public? Going three times? All right, uh, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Kim first, Peter second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Public hearing's closed. Okay, Ron, what's our next order of business would lead to Santilis, please?
Uh, you've done all the, uh, other typical statutory requirements. You've classified it minor previously. You've declared it a type two action concluding seeker. You've conducted your sidewalk. Now, with the close of the public hearing, you might wish to consider whether you want a resolution prepared for the next meeting.
The board members, any comments or questions at this point for the applicant or his, uh, advisors?
Just a quick one, Neil. Thanks. Uh, Jason, I think you and, uh, Kim and I, when we did the sidewalk, we talked about the sweep of the driveway coming down, making that left turn into the property. I mean, it looks like you rectified that on the, on the, on the, on the drawing, but are you, is that? Just wanna make sure. I mean, that was the only thing that stood out to me with this, with this site plan. So have you, have you gotten that figured out?
Well, we, we have not changed the, the alignment of, of the driveway at all. The, the, um, the, the Conservation Board was happy with the, uh, with the, the, the culvert, the existing culvert there and, and the way it went over the, the, the stream. We haven't received any comments from the, um, from the, uh, from the fire department with regard to that.
All right.
Um, so, I mean, so to answer your question, no, we have not. I mean, we have not done anything with that.
All right. It's a little, it's a little tight. That's all. That was, you know, that was my only take on that.
Planning Board meeting.
Well, is there a, Jason, Mr. Santilis, you want to take this into account? If Neil and Kim have raised this topic a couple of times, they must, they must have some reason why.
Well, from, from what I remember, it, we were only gonna do, we were only gonna change it if it became an issue with the fire department or the Conservation Board. That in my mind, that's, that's how we left the alignment.
Have you heard from the fire department?
Did we refer this? Yeah. Did we refer this to Garrison?
Yes, it was referred to, um, to Jim Erickson.
Okay. All right. So Jim didn't have an issue with it. So I'll go with that. That's fine.
I just have a, a question, um, about the trees that are being planted on the, on the border with the neighbor. Um, you said they were being pla- can you re- repeat what you said about what they were being planted in? Did you say castcrete or something like that?
Oh, well, you, you had a concern with regard to the proximity of the new plantings to the, to this, to the sewer force main. So what we've done is we've proposed a redundant affluent sewer force main and we've encased that, will encase that trench in, uh, in, in, uh, a low-density, uh, concrete so that the roots won't interfere with the, with, with the piping.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't know what that was. I just wanted to understand, you know, what that was.
So that, so that, so that way we'll never have to, you know, we, we have the redundant main, we'll never have to dig up that area again. I know that was a concern. So with, I think with this arrangement of redundant force mains, encasing it in Kcrete, we'll never have, that area will never have to be dug up again and we'll never have a clearing between the two properties. That, that was the idea with that. So.
Okay. Can you just tell me about the trees? What are they?
Uh, we just proposed some, uh, Norway spruce. So they'll, they'll grow fast and, um, you know, you'll have a, you'll have a good screening from top to bottom. Uh, you know, you're never gonna have that, that missing growth. Once they get big, uh, you know, at the base, you'll always have the, the full, like a pine tree. You'll always have that full depth of screening. So. So that, so we have those spaced every, uh, uh, what is it? Sixteen feet on center.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other board members' questions? Okay. Would I like a motion to direct Ron to air the, uh, final resolutions, please? Thank you, Kim first. Any second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, so we'll have that at our next meeting in, uh, January. Thank you, Mr. Santilis.
Thank you.
Okay, let's call our second public hearing, Johnson and Rinderman. Uh, Cheryl, would you do the honors and let in the applicant and their?
Okay, so this is me too. Um, this is a, uh, again, I'll make this.
Sorry, Neil, do you want me to read the notice?
Yeah, please, go ahead, Cheryl.
The Planning Board of the Town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, starting at seven thirty PM via Zoom to consider the following application. Johnson and Rinderman, Mountain Brook Drive, Cold Spring, New York, one oh five one six, tax map number one six dot dash one dash thirty-four and fifty-six. Minor project development of a new single-family dwelling to be served by a new septic system and private well and related site improvements. Dated at Phillips Town, New York, this day eighteen, this eighteenth day of November, two thousand twenty-one. Neil Zuckerman, Chair.
Okay, Jason, highlights from Hamlet version, please.
Okay, so we have a, um, single-family residence on a, uh, twelve and a quarter acre, uh, parcel at the end of uh, Mountain Brook Drive in the Rural Conservation, uh, zoning district. Uh, the driveway is approximately, uh, we're proposing a driveway of approximately fourteen hundred, uh, linear feet. We have a, um, again, a septic and well has been approved by the Putnam County Department of Health. Much of the driveway is in the, uh, proposed driveway is in the, is in the wetland buffer, which we are in front of the Conservation Board for that. We have a, uh, and that we had a, so that's, that, that's on God that we have, uh, we have some work to do with, with, with some, uh, mitigation with regard to that. So. Um, we have the, now for the house site. We have this north wing and, um, south wing uh, connected by the, uh, the lap pool, uh, the elevated lap pool. This is on a, um, on this, um, Fishkill, I believe this is Fishkill Pond here. Um, again, we have, uh, Board of Health approval on the septic system and well. Uh, we do have a, back, going back to the front, we do have a detached garage um, at the end of the driveway near, am I, am I sharing my screen or no? I'm sharing my screen, right?
Yeah, yes, you're sharing. You keep, you keep zooming in in different places.
Sorry about that. So we do, we do have a detached garage, a small detached garage. It's well under the, the thought one thousand square foot. Threshold for the, for zoning. And, and that, so that's where we're at now. We have about two acres of disturbance. So we will be providing a, uh, a, um, we will be filing a stormwater pollution prevention plan with the state for a general construction permit. So that, that's where we're at now.
Okay, thank you, Jason. All right, um, Cheryl, let's let in anyone who would like to say anything, any members of the public who can hear my voice. You're, this is the time to speak. Anybody? Raise your hand virtually, send a text message. Anybody? Okay, Aaron, Mr. S- Mr. Sadler, why don't you, uh, come on and ask your question? I know tech biz or more of that than just a startup project. Jason, why don't you answer that question before maybe Mr. Sadler joins us and shares his thoughts?
I'm sorry, what, what was the question?
For you, propose startup project, I guess, when we're all done here, but that was the gentleman's question.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Neil.
Go ahead, Mr. Sadler. Go ahead and speak, whatever you wanna say.
Yes, my friend, uh, just asking the proposed start of the project, you think?
As soon as we get all the, 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 uh, permits, I mean, we wanna get started as soon as possible because we got the, uh, we got the bats restriction for the tree cutting starting, uh, April first. So ideally, uh, we would get this started around March. The beginning of March, ideally. You know, we need to get the, uh, we need to get the, the, uh, Conservation Board, uh, the wetland permit for this. Uh, I'm hoping to get that. Hopefully we can get that at the me- next meeting. Uh, but other than that, we won't, you know, it needs to get, it needs to get going soon. So, I mean, I would say in March, we would get started with the, with the, with the rough cut of the driveway and the tree clearing.
Copy that, Jason. We'll come on down and say hello when you start.
All right, no problem.
All right, Mr. Sadler, thank you. Are there other public speakers? Anyone else wanna comment? Are you recognized? Who may live nearby at the, an attendee tonight? I don't, I don't know a lot of the names here. Some of them, they don't, don't, I don't recognize. Last chance. Anyone else? Oh, I see someone just raised their hand.
Okay, it's Mr. Dwyer. I'm gonna move him over.
Yep. Mr. Dwyer, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just had to tell you. Um, I guess my question was, it's, it's pretty close to the reservoir. I assume there's been, uh, that's been looked at, right?
Yeah, well, we are, we, it, the, the, uh, we, the, the road is in the, in the, uh, the driveway is in the buffer. Um, we are, uh, we, the, 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 the idea is, the proposal is to use an existing, uh, the existing, the existing traveled way that leads up to the reservoir. So we're, we're using an existing corridor to access the house site.
Yeah, no, I walked that area a lot, that's why.
Yeah, so.
I've met Mr. Johnson too, so I, I know the site. I just wanted to make sure someone had really looked at, if there was gonna be anything, you know.
Oh, yeah. So we do have a wetland mitigation plan, uh, proposed. Uh, that's, that's, uh, Susan Genshill's, uh, uh, this is her mitigation plan. So we are proposing a wetland mitigation plan for the, um, for this development near the pond. That, that's, that, that is being looked at by the Conservation Board as we speak.
Okay.
It may be, Ron, you can just address the, the nature of the, the, uh, proximity of the pond to this development and how it fits.
Certainly. Thank you. Um, first should be recognized that the, the pond is no longer being used as a public water supply resource. Um, and as has been touched on, Conservation Board is, And as has been touched on, Conservation Board is uh thoroughly uh involved in the project and processing an application with them. Uh, they've been out to the site. Planning Board has issued comments to the uh or the uh Conservation Board has issued com- comments to the Planning Board. And they're uh, they've identified to the applicants some mitigation that they want to see on the latest site plans. So the mitigation or the vegetation plan is currently under review as well. Uh, so they're looking at all those issues.
Thank you, Ron. Any else, Mr. Dwyer?
No, I think that's that's fine with me. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other members of the public? Who would like to speak? Uh, there's some names out there I haven't seen for Mr. Drew Gammels or Miss issuesha. I don't know if you're here to speak about uh this, if you can hear me, but you're more than welcome to speak or Marty Ayeo. Uh, I don't know if you're here for this last chance. Okay. Going it. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Kim, thank you. Second. Laura, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, public hearing is closed. Okay, Ron, what are our next steps, please?
Uh, well, let's just touch on one last list uh subject. The uh you did receive another a bit of public comment from uh John Hammer. He was unable to attend tonight, but I know he's transmitted a uh an email letter to the board, just to acknowledge for the record that uh his comments have been received and are being considered by the board.
Thank you, Ron.
And and then uh, once the public hearing is closed. As I've indicated before, all the other uh prior statutory issues have been addressed. Um, so at this point, at the close of the hearing, you may wish to consider uh the drafting of a resolution for the next meeting.
And and what about the open Conservation Board assessment? Is that something we need to await?
Uh, that that could be a condition of approval. But they've already issued comments to both the board and the applicant, so it's expected that those will get resolved. That permit will be forthcoming.
You have that in writing for Max that a permit will be forthcoming?
Uh, no, there's not. His letter does not make that statement. I'm just saying that the uh Conservation Board comments have already been transmitted to the applicant, so they're now in the applicant's hands to address.
So, look, I'll 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 take the sentiment of the board. I I I find that I find I'd like to try and stick with precedent when we get the Conservation Board questions. I think we typically wait for those things to be resolved before we approve things. And so we're mindful of the of speed and we're trying to be, I think, fairly quick. We have been with this application. I also want to be mindful of one of our sister boards or brother boards, or if you want to call it cousin boards, is a fellow board is uh still in process with a with.
Neil, if I may?
Ron.
Neil?
Yeah, please do.
Um, I I'd suggest that the thing to do is to direct Ron to prepare it for next month. And if you haven't heard from CB gotten comments to your satisfaction, then you just don't adopt it. You put it off until you do. But to have it ready to go will help the applicant and, you know, help the board move it along if you're in a position to do that.
That sounds reasonable. Send them in the board, folks. Can she head nod? Any? Thank you, Kim, others?
Yeah. Jason, I watched the meeting. I watched the Conservation Board. Me, it seemed like you're pretty close. What was your take on that? It seemed like you were you were you were, I mean, they definitely had you had some pushback, but it seemed like you were pretty close.
Yeah, I mean, from what I yeah, it's just a matter of of fine tuning the uh the wetland mitigation plan uh really for this um it's really for this this piece that comes around to the side. Uh, we're going to have to uh provide a little bit more there, I think, is what they is what they want to see. So we can certainly do that.
And yeah, applicants, well, right. It sounded like the applicant was willing to.
He's totally willing to do. He, right, he he's he's got a landscape architect on board and he's he's working on it and he's uh ready and and willing to 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 uh make improvements to this uh to this wetland buffer.
Yeah, my my take my take was that you were very close.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, they were. I mean, they were. They were good with the the whole length of the uh there's been no objection to this to the whole length of driveway in the um you know, using this existing uh traveled way through the through the buffer and uh they they haven't really had any concerns with that. Um, it's really just this this ending that we're trying to to um.
Let's let's not. I'd like not to adjudicate whether another board is going to tell us they think. So let's let's let them tell us what they think, not if you don't mind, because I I want to. I I think for us to vote on this next month, we have to have affirmative approval from the point in the Conservation Board that things have been addressed. So that's going to be the stipulation that that we have to have an affirmative in writing. Yeah, Max says it's good. Okay, so I'm I'm fine. I'm fine. I take Ron's point. So can I get a motion to direct Ron to create final resolutions? Thank you, Kim. Second. Neil, any discussion about what we do going for? Are people comfortable with this approach? Okay, so we will not vote on it next month. I will not bring it in for you unless we have the approval from the Conservation Board. Is that clear to everyone? Is that fair, Mr. Johnson? Okay. Okay, so let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye, posed. Extension. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Johnson, we'll see you next month and just keep us abreast, please. And and if it's not in by then, let's please not, let's not use the board's time then if we don't have it in from from that.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We'll keep you posted. Appreciate it.
Very much. Okay, let's bang at the Polhemus uh piece. And it says, Glenn, you were going to give us a view of this garage from the trails. I think we already directed for approval, did we not, Ron? Last time? You're on mute, Ron.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you've got an approval resolution in front of you for action.
Yeah, good. So Glenn, I know you were going to just do a quickie on this, the views.
If I could share my screen? You guys see it?
Yes.
Okay, well, as the I've been through Ron's resolution, it it really covers all the topics. Essentially, you're putting a thousand square foot garage over in the northwest corner of this property. You'll remember it's it's on the west side of Route ninety between Route ninety and the river. It's got frontage also on Manito Station Road. The Polhemus excavating contracting business has been on this site um for a long time, certainly longer than I've been here, and I'm pushing fifty years. Um, so the so there is no really other activity except for this proposed garage, which is just north of 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 the stable that's down that's down in this location. Um, like it's it's just over a thousand square feet. It's commercially zoned property. Uh, you had asked for some question. Kim had asked for some a question with regard for to of the possible impacts from on the vis- on the on the visual impacts from people walking the trails on the property to the north, the Manito Point Preserve. We submitted a letter report and map and a couple of photographs to show that um the garage won't won't really impact it. Uh, you will see it probably a little bit, but it's it's nestled between the the view is of the barn and the and the residential structure here. They're both in the field of view. So and there's a couple of trees in the way that are blocking one of the views. So any impact will be absolutely minimal. Uh, and and from several hundred feet away. So with that, I'd be pleased to have you act on the resolution.
You want to show the picture? On the screen, please?
Well, I will try.
Unless did every board member get a chance to see in their packets or they would like to?
Here, I put it on the screen. But well, I this is this is the second page of the letter.
Yeah, there you go.
And and here's, and this is all highlighted in red. I I walked the trail then and and sketched it on this topo map from the Manito Point survey. And I took two photographs that this quite a close point. You see, you're at this point from the west side, you're coming up a steep embankment. You get to kind of a landing in flat area where you could turn around and see it. Or if you're coming that the other way, you you could look over and see it. And and then you go keep further, you start bending around to the east, and there's another point that's directly, which is sort of the direct line of sight where you where you can see it. Um, I'll have to rotate this. I hope I'm able to rotate this view. View. Rotate. Sorry, you rotate view, right? So the proposed, this is the first site as the ones coming up from the west. Um, the this this is the barn. And over here to the left, that is that there's a the house, the the garage storage building will be behind these trees at that point. And I'll show you. And let's see, one more. And this is a from four hundred feet away. Again, you have a standard trees. You can get a little glimpse of the driveway. You can see the the barn building right where my cursor is now. And this is, you know, all bare trees at this point. It was it was it was take the photographs were taken. I don't know the exact date, but like I guess December second. So trees, trees are bare. That's what you're going to see in the worst condition.
Any questions? No? Okay, uh, anyone else? No questions? Glenn, thank you for putting. Oh, Kim, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you, Glenn, for going out and doing that.
You're welcome.
Hey, he should pay you his exercise. It's good for him. So can I get a motion then to to uh approve the resolutions that we had prepared? Kim first, Dennis second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, good. Glenn, thank you. Thank you, Glenn. Okay, uh, I'm going to follow on the path I had suggested earlier. I'd like to do the Garrison Golf Course first. I think we have a more limited set of topics tonight. We have a couple of things. We have to handle one piece of content, a couple of administrative topics uh tonight. So uh with with everyone's permission, as long as the Hudson, uh, sorry, the um a lot of Hudson, a lot of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare's Festival, Garrison Golf Club gang is ready. We're going to have Mr. Canning talk us through his um report on the peak traffic. Thank you for doing that. Uh, I think you can show up the pictures of the the bridge, and then we'll talk about two scheduling topics. So, uh, Cheryl, if you'll let in uh the Garrison Golf Club and Shakespeare folks, we'll have that report. John, the floor is yours. Actually, let me let actually, John, before that, let me just let me just back up. Sorry, I I I just two quick things I want to say. Okay, uh, and I I I don't know how much this is communicated in town. I just want to be very clear. I I I think this is a really important project. And I think I don't think, as I said last time, and I think I've said it a couple of times, I don't think there's anyone at this board that doesn't think this is good for the community. And yet there are people on different viewpoints, have different views of this project. And as with every single project, most people have a viewpoint. And usually that viewpoint is tied to one's proximity to the property. So I just want to be clear that the best way for a community like ours of our size to move forward with something like this decorum and friendliness and politeness and knowing that we're all going to be living close to each other no matter what happens. And I'm I'm being somewhat opaque in what I'm saying. I think I'm referring to a particular incident that happened a couple of weeks ago. Uh, and I don't want to see that kind of behavior in our community from anyone. We're all here trying to do our best serving the community. You guys are doing your best to put forward a good project for the community and for your organization. I think we all have the best of intentions. I think anyone who's participating in this process, whether as a board member or whether as a member of the public should abide by those rules of decorum. Um, everyone can get heated about things, but there's lines that are not worth crossing and should not be crossed. And I think there was a line crossed recently, and I don't want to see that anymore happen. And I'm not talking about anyone on this call in particular, but I do think we have to all be mindful. We're all here building a community together. So I say that those opaque uh comments and effort to just make sure we stay with the on the right side of right. Um, then the second thing is, let's just remind folks, we did many hours over the last two meetings going through detail parts, the part three of the environmental impact statement. There was one detailed discussion tied to, I don't even remember what letter chapter it is, traffic letter S? No, it was a F, whatever the hell it was. Traffic was one of the letters. And so we had this discussion about understanding the peak volume of traffic uh using one whole day, a busy day, a Saturday, and seeing the way the traffic would mount based upon the different programming. And John has given us an hour by hour view of that. That's what we're doing here for the members of the public. So, John, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, good to see you all. So uh, I presume I may share the screen?
Please.
Okay, thank you. And if you can just confirm that you can see it, please?
Yes, sir.
All good?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so you you did request that we provide the specifics of how the population of the site would change across the hours of the busiest Saturday and how that would translate into vehicular trips uh similar to what we had provided for the ebb and flow across the entire year. So we provided you with two sets of graphs. Um, we wanted to be consistent with the majority of the materials that we've provided to you. So the first set of graphs basically uh shows traffic projections uh with um afternoon, uh first Saturday with afternoon events and with evening events that would be uh the indoor theater, the outdoor theater, weddings, the restaurant, the hotel, pretty much everything. And then um recently, at the suggestion of of your traffic consultant, Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival committed to not having Saturday matinee indoor performances if there was a wedding event. So the second set of graphs that I'll go through basically will show you that, and it will demonstrate, I hope, uh, what the benefit of that is. Uh, that was the suggestion of your traffic consultant. So with that, um, the graph that you have up in front of you is, again, this is the ninety fifth percentile. So it's pretty much the we expect the busiest Saturday that you will see at the facility. And it is the population, the number of people on the site at the various times of the day. Uh, just looking at the graph, you can see that the top number is somewhere between a thousand and twelve hundred. It's a little north of eleven hundred, which is what we had presented in the graphs previously for the monthly peaks. And you can see that uh in the early morning hours, there's very few people there. Uh, we have broken it down in this graph. I've tried to keep the colors consistent, and the tables are provided also so that you could dig into them and see where what the actual numbers were and and where everybody was going. The blue is basically Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. And the really dark blue is the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival staff that reside on site. There's about thirty of those. The uh slightly less dark blue is Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival non-resident staff. There's also about thirty of those. So they obviously live off site, and then they come on when there's a performance and they do what they need to do. And uh after a performance, then they go home. Uh, then the uh, let's call it the sky blue is uh the number of people that will attend a performance for a tent uh performance. The maximum attendance is five hundred and thirty. I think we've got a a maximum when everybody else is maxing out at five hundred and twenty one out of five hundred and thirty. And for the indoor tent, we have, I think, two hundred and eighteen out of two twenty five. So you can see uh the blue there is the indoor tent or this the is the tent, which is quite big in for a matinee and then quite big again for an evening performance. The light blue is the indoor theater. Uh, it would be on top, obviously, of in addition to the tent, and that's a lesser number, obviously. And then in red, it's the banquet. So we've got shown here two weddings. There'll never be two weddings at the same time, but there could be a wedding in the morning and a wedding in the or or a wedding in the afternoon. And rather than sending you in a whole another set of graphs, we just put them on on the same graph. If you want to know what an evening is like, cover, put your left hand over the left side of the the graph. And if you want to know what an afternoon looks like, put your right hand over the right side of the graph. So the wedding, we show the staff in the dark red, and then we show attendees in the uh lighter red, two hundred attendees for a wedding. And then we have the restaurant, both the staff and the diners. The staff are in the light yellow and the diners are in the, let's call it beige. And then to round it out, we have hotel staff. There's only three or four of them. Uh, you can hardly see it there in the darker green. And the guests, hotel guests, uh, which are in the and in And the guests, hotel guests, which are in the and in the lighter green. So if you sum them all up, you can see. How between eleven and one, you get a large influx of people into the site from one through, let's say, three o'clock, three thirty. You're at a fairly stable population from three to four thirty. You have. A large departure from the site from five to seven. You have the second wave, if you want to call it that, for an evening performance. You'll note that there is. A separation between the afternoon and evening. There is some overlap, but there there is a separation between the bulk of them, which is important and good. Then you have a steady number across from seven to nine, and then after nine, you have. Pretty much everybody departs the the site in the evening. So that's the population and how it varies with the time of day. And then we have in the tables indicated. How many of each various uses will, you know, stay on the site. So for example, some of Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. Spectators will will also go to the restaurant. Some of them may stay at the hotel. Some of the banquet people may stay at the hotel. So that's indicated. We also have, which is typical for larger weddings, some of the wedding attendees. Traveling by bus. And we also have a small number of people traveling to and from Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival by the shuttle that would be to the garrison. So we we applied all of these factors which are in the table. To the number of people that were in the graph that I had just shown you. And this is what it translates to into vehicular trips. This is the sum of the ons and the offs. Rather than giving you too much information, I just said, let's lump all of the trips together in and out. So you can see in the the twelve to one period, that's when you you get a lot of people arriving for the afternoon activities and it it maxes out at. I'm gonna say two hundred and fifty, at least over two hundred. Then you have a lull in the middle of the day for the afternoon activities, and then you get an increase in the late afternoon up to about three hundred and fifty, let's say. As you have people departing from the. Afternoon activities. And then that drops a bit, but you have more activity again in the six to seven hours. People start to arrive for the. The evening activities. You've got a lull in the middle of the evening as the evening activities go on. And then you have the the greatest amount. In in the late evening, because when everything, when the show is over, everybody goes home. So that's three hundred and I'm gonna say it's three hundred and sixty or so. Cars. And just quickly to show you the difference between with and without. A with and without matinee event in the indoor theater. So this is with. The matinee event in the indoor theater. Here's the matinee event. And if we take it out. You can see it's gone here and the afternoon traffic has gone down. So that means less traffic coming in. In the early afternoon hour, less traffic going out in the late afternoon hour. And then what that means from a traffic, I'll do it one more time, just so it's visually. I guess. Easier to see. And so what that does from a traffic perspective, this is the traffic projections that we had. For both the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. And for for the tent and for the indoor theater. And I would like to point out on this graph, rather than giving you. Two colors for each use, I just lumped Hudson Valley altogether is blue. The banquet altogether is red. The restaurant altogether is yellow. And the hotel trips altogether is green. The Davis Residence is in there somewhere, but let's not talk about that. So this is with afternoon. With an afternoon wedding and with an afternoon. Indoor theater matinee. So if we take the matinee out of it. You can see that the number of trips goes down fairly considerably, not as dramatically as with the number of people. But it still goes down fairly considerably in the early afternoon and the late afternoon. And it was the late afternoon period that was identified by your consultant as an area of concern at the intersection of Route ninety with Snake Hill Road. So in a nutshell, and not to take up too much of your time, that is the best way I could present to you. Visually, the the relationship between time and the number of people and the number of vehicles. And then we did provide all of the backup material. That you could go through it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
John, thank you. Very helpful. And as a guy who spends a lot of his professional time taking the complex and making it visually. Understandable, that was helpful. So board members, questions? Kim, no. Dennis, no. Peter, go.
And the number of cars were determined by how many people in each car are we at two or four at this point?
So that that it varied, but the most important ones were Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival guests. So they were two point. Let me get make sure I gets two point one per car. The banquet. Were two point five per car, but a hundred of the two hundred guests came by bus. Which was in three buses, and we counted that as six trips in and six trips out at the start and the end, which was. Information that was provided to be by Chip from the garrison. That's typically what they expect, and they rarely have a two hundred person wedding. The staff for. The staff for Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival were one point five per car. That's there was thirty staff off offsite staff. And then the 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 remainder of the staff, and we did include staff for the band and staff for valets, the staff for the hotel, the staff for the restaurant. They were at one point two per car.
Okay, and one other very quick question. At this particular time, you're not considering the public use of the of the land, which is going to be opened. To really be a factor in this. What happened, I mean. Could become a really popular place to go. I mean, it, so should they be figured into these? These calculations as well?
Well, I mean, I think the best person to answer that might be Davis McCollum from Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. My understanding is that the intent of of. Of the application is to make the land and the facilities available to the public as much as possible. But when you have these maximum event days, certainly the pavilion is not going to be made available for the public. And while there, you know, there may be some people that come in and out and walk through the gardens. It's likely to be a minimal amount. So.
Okay, that's what that's really what I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Other questions? Heidi, anything? Laura?
I I have a quick question. Um, um, John, did you do a graph that just shows that the tent? The car trips with just the with just the outdoor, the tent theater and not the indoor theater as well? I know you're you're showing us like the maximum. Views, but I'm just curious if by chance down the line. The, you know. It 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 eventuates. That there are traffic issues and the indoor theater is not built. I'm just curious what would be the traffic situation?
So so I don't have a specific graph for that, but what I can do is two things that hopefully will help you understand. So in this graph, the sky blue. Is the tent. And the light blue is the indoor theater. And so if you take the indoor theater out, and if you look at the left side of the graph. That's what it would look like without the indoor theater. I didn't take the indoor theater out of the right side of the graph, but it would look something similar. So that's from the population perspective. And then the only thing I can, I guess I can do the same thing here is if you look, this is the number of vehicular trips with the indoor theater for a matinee. So if you look at the left side where my cursor is, and you can see that.
You're not sharing, John.
Oh, God. How did that happen? Let me figure this out again. Was I not sharing the whole time?
No, you were. Justin, just in response to my question, you weren't.
Oh, my apologies, Miss Wendell.
No problem.
Okay, so let me just quickly run through that again. I presume you did not see this. So this is the graph with the sky blue is the Hudson is the the tent and the light blue is the indoor theater. And so if you watch the left side of the graph and you take the indoor theater out. That's how the population would go down. If you took the indoor theater out and didn't build it all together, the population would go down by the same amount on the right side. So is that is that clear?
Yeah, I guess then you just have to do the calculation to take out. The it it's this graph, it's the kind of.
Right, so from so from a traffic perspective, if you look on the left side, so you can see where the blue here is up to, I'm gonna say that's two hundred, two hundred and seventy five, and here maybe it's a hundred and eighty five. So a hundred and eighty five and two two seventy five, if I take out the theater on that side. It goes down to probably a hundred and eighty five goes down to close to a hundred. And two seventy five goes under two hundred.
Got it.
So that's what it would do, and it would do the same thing on the right side.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, others? Laura, anything? I've lost Laura from my screen. There she is. Laura, you have anything?
No, I just have a general question. Do we have a sense of what the percentage increase is? To this maximum traffic assessment to what the maximum was when the golf course was at full operations? It's not a fair question.
I don't have it. I don't have it on the tip of my tongue. I I certainly could get you that. I will tell you that it is. Considerably more when the golf club was at its maximum operations. Just, you know, it's it would be. It would be wrong of me to say that it's not more than what the golf course was.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone with Dennis or? I can't see them. I don't know where they have so many people on the screen. There's Neil, okay. No, Neil, anything? Dennis, nothing? Okay, so I I have one. I I think it's more of a comment now, not a question, because I think Peter beat me to it. So when I went through your. Your table, and again, thank you for this. It is clear that a the reason why there's such an imbalance between the couple, the thousand plus people and the number of cars is this bus assumption. And I'm, it it took a little bit of work with your font three to get in there, but thank God I had those glasses I got recently to help me see. So walk me through, I heard you mention that Chip has got some viewpoints on this. I'd like to have a little more clarity about the history of. There being a bu- buses that forty five percent of your guests take. That sounds like. I I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't run the events. Chip obviously does. I I I was surprised to learn that a hundred of two hundred and nineteen people are taking the bus. To weddings. So I just, is that, is that every single week is the, go ahead.
Can I can I confirm that Chip is here tonight? I can't see everybody.
John, Chip's not here, but Marty Agello, who's the Associate General Manager at the Garrison, is here, and she's been promoted to be a panelist, so she could speak to that question.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name's Marty Agello. I've been with the Garrison since two thousand and four and working all along with Chip Alaman. What I can tell you, it's actually higher than that. I went through the weddings this weekend for two thousand and twenty one. On Friday evenings, we averaged eighty percent of the weddings. Whether they were two hundred or one hundred. That hired busing. Most of the buses are, they accommodate forty seven people. For instance, this Saturday's wedding had three buses. That's a hundred and forty one. People out of the one eighty this weekend that came by bus. It's a big trend. Because the hotel is not on the property. It becomes a destination and a wedding weekend experience. Many stay and drive to the hotel. And they all get on the bus at the same time. They arrive at the same time, enjoy the event and the part at the same time. A lot of them have afterparties at the hotels and the brides want to make sure that everybody is leaving at the same time. So most of them now of Fridays and Saturdays. Are about eighty to ninety percent now busing. Sundays are not usually busing because people. Want to get to work on Monday and do not stay over the hotels on Sunday. Some of the bus companies that we recommend are Leprechaun, JTR, that was who was here this weekend. George Carroll.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to bus. I'm or not, I don't think anyone, we're not hiring any buses, Marty, but thank you. So Marty, and I thank you for that. It's very helpful. All I'm gonna say is the following. What I heard you say is that the operative reason is this, there's no hotel. Because they're going from their hotel here, but there's gonna be a hotel. So when there is a hotel, and I'm not asking you to predict, because I don't know what's gonna happen either, but you're, I heard your comment, it's helpful. And it's dependent on people going from a hotel together to here and then back to the hotel at the party. I got it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Zuckerman, if I can, I will tell you that a twenty room hotel is only a portion of the wedding block.
I get it. I get it. Very helpful. All right, no more questions? Then board members, thank you, John. I know you guys wanted to show some of the pictures of this bridge. You're more than welcome to Jan, if you'd like.
Jan and Laney are gonna do that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, how do I stop sharing or have I stopped sharing already?
You stopped sharing, John.
Thank God for that. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Laney.
Laney, where are you gonna, where are you gonna share?
Sure. We will be very quick. We just wanted, we had at our last meeting discussed what the positive, but the new Snake Hill Road entrance would look like. So we wanted to. Give some precedent images of this. We wanted to share first. These images of an existing span bridge on the Garrison Golf Course. So we have kept this language in mind as we have developed. The span bridge for the that we're proposing for the new entry. These are some precedent images that we've gathered, showing you the span bridge. A span bridge means that it allows for the bridge to cross over the wetland without. Touching that wetland area, so it's better for the environment. And this is a is a great way to be able to protect that area. And then we, along with the help of Glenn and his team, we've created a section, you know, a conceptual section through the bridge. Showing how it would come off of, this is Snake Hill Road on our right hand side. You know, I'm gonna scroll in a little bit. Snake Hill Road on our right hand side. You can see coming across, this is the span here. You can see the embankment. The bridge coming across. We've shown where the delineated wetland is, so we are not touching the delineated wetland. And then again, the other embankment on the the far, on the left hand side of this image. We feel these are in character with the golf course and the surrounding areas and, as I said. Provide great benefit to the wetland because we do not have to touch that delineated wetland.
Great, thank you.
John, if there's anything I missed, please jump in.
I I'll just say that when we resubmit our environmental assessment form. We had been in previous versions conservative in that. Preliminary. Evaluations of the bridge, we had identified some potential impact to the wetland proper. But after studying it more and and presenting these. These images, we're we're comfortable that we can build this bridge without any impact to the wetland itself. So. In our next iteration of the EAF, you're gonna see that we're gonna go to a zero. Impact to the wetland proper. And that the buffer is gonna be reduced. So we're we're happy to say with the span bridge that we're we're able to. Span this this water course without any impact to it, to the wetland proper itself.
Thank you. Board members, questions?
Neil, you know, we we have the, we have a site visit plan. What 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 do we end up for the, what what day do we end up for the next site visit? Was that the?
January.
January.
Nine. Do we wanna, do we wanna stop by there and take it, as long as we're out? Do we wanna stop by? Is there any way you can stake it out so we can have a look at it?
Yeah, I I I I I think, I think you're on to something. I think there is, this is the, there's a material change, the plant. You know, when you move the houses of the of your. Guests, when you move the houses from the east to the west, we we did walk through the site visit through the first hole, so we all saw that, but. There was no attention visually visually. And I think the the public would benefit from a conversation and this board from visualizing. The space because it is a significant physical structure being proposed. So I'd like to suggest this board, go take a look. At on January ninth as well. I'll 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 let the board weigh in if they think it's a valuable activity. I don't think it's a very long visit. I think it's staring at a. An overpass, basically. It also would be the chance for the public to see the space, too. So I'd like board members' thoughts on on what Neil was suggesting. Peter, go ahead.
No, I think it's a great idea to go back for a quick visit. It'll give you a sense of the topography. That goes off west. that goes off west of the, the, the stream that comes out underneath the current bridge and it's a, it'd be really nice to have a sense of really the lay of the land. For us, we'll have a better view up the slope to the north, and I think it's a great idea.
Good, thank you. Other comments? Go ahead, Jan.
I just wanted to point out, and I, I think that's a great idea that you revisit it, but we, just to mention that we had a a similar walk with the Conservation Board last week, and they, we walked them around all the, you know, really all the property, but paid specific attention to the areas where there's wetland and wetland buffer disturbance, and this was obviously a focal point. And we really got pretty, pretty good reviews and reception from the Conservation Board on the span bridge, just because of, of what it is. A span bridge with limited fragmentation, the ability to, you know, walk under it and, and, and have, you know, vegetation below it. I think they saw it. They saw it for what it was, and that, you know, we tried to really preserve that wetland corridor by spanning the, the wetland resource as opposed to fragmenting it with a a true, a true bridge, you know, the span is. Just wanna let you know that we had the Conservation Board visit, and it, you know, we, 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 I think we're received with welcome comment from them on, on this particular issue.
Yeah, Jan, it's a good point. I think we're there not just for the wetlands. That's obviously what Max and the Conservation Board look at. We're there for community character.
Yes, yeah, I get it. I get it. Just wanted to mention it.
That's good. All right, other board, so let's just take a motion then, and then we can, we can vote, a motion to schedule a public hearing. That's our, sort of, uh, site visit for that's one portion of this proposed bridge off of Snake Hill. For, I think, the ninth, ten AM, Peter first, second, Dennis, all in favor, say, oh, sorry, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, so let's do this one at ten thirty. We'll go to our nine thirty-one at Bennett Donald's house over there, and then we'll come over to this site. And it would be helpful, Jan and Laney, if you could stake the, the corners at least, so we just have visual representation.
The bridge itself?
The bridge itself, yeah. Like where the road is, just, just to help us see, see where it would go.
We could do that, for sure.
Okay. All right, last order of business is the, the long-awaited public hearing for this conversation. And I know we're all looking forward to have that conversation, because it's a good milestone and making progress. Like the, I think this, this group of volunteers has been very generous with their time to their community, and it's gonna continue to be generous by trying to dual-track this project as much as possible, given the magnitude. When I say dual-track, I mean giving it the appropriate time it deserves. Despite the fact that we're not gonna get a doubling of our enormous, uh, munificent salaries. We're gonna, we're gonna do it anyway, and so I'm gonna propose to dedicate Thursday, I believe it's January twenty seventh to, uh, doing a public hearing for this topic. And I'd like to even more, go one step further and ask that we do it in person somewhere that is an appropriate accommodation venue for such a, what I think will be a well-attended public hearing. I'd like to not do it over Zoom. I'd like to try and do it in person. I think Kim had suggested maybe we do it at maybe Hal Day or someplace that there's an actual, go ahead, Kim.
So before we do that, should we ask Steve if there are any restrictions from the governor?
Good point, good point.
The current restrictions only last through, I believe, January fifteenth. Now, whether they'll be extended or not, it's a whole nother matter. If you want to schedule it for the twenty-seventh, and then you either need to bump it or, or change it over to a, um, because it'll be seventeen days. Well, it'll be twelve days. If you have to go virtual, because they haven't lifted the, even then, you could still do it, just everybody be masked right now. It's not like you can't have it. It's just everybody be masked. So I'm, I'd go ahead and schedule it and imagine, you know, anticipate that there won't be further restrictions, and you can go forward, and if, God forbid, there are more restrictions, you could, you know, bump the date into February and, and, you know, go virtual or whatever it is you need to do. But I, I'd suggest going forward with this plan. Now, can you get Hal Day or something like that? I mean.
Well, Kim had mentioned it's a large venue. I don't know where, Cheryl, I'm gonna put it to your capable hands to find us a venue. I think doing in Town Hall is just a tight space for what I think will be a well-attended event. Bob, I don't know, give me thoughts.
Yeah, I agree. I think the Town Hall will be a little bit too small of a space for that. We have the rec center. We always have the recs, the gym at the rec center as well.
That's fine. Yeah, the rec center, we were meeting for a while. I, I'm fine with that. But Cheryl, I put in your hands, let's assume with all the applicants team here, which is a good ten-person team, and let's assume at least thirty public speakers is my guess. I'm just getting, just making up a number, but something that, and then the board itself. So I think we're talking at least a roomly accommodate fifty people. Be fair.
Excuse me, Neil, and Cecilia, I just wanted to say that there's not much Wi-Fi in the rec center if you're trying to do a live for people at home.
So Steve, do we, Steve, are we still okay to do this hundred percent real and not have a virtual simultaneous?
Yeah, no, you can, you can do it one hundred percent live without any simultaneous right now.
We're not, we're gonna do it live. Go ahead, Bob.
I was gonna say, I believe that the internet at the rec center was upgraded and is much better than it was, I was told.
So if we can do it live via, you know, via YouTube, and even if maybe someone could participate on Zoom, I think we could have that. I mean, I've been in lots of meetings with the MTA Board does both simultaneously, so the technology exists. So, but let, let's solve that problem. Cheryl, you're gonna work on the right venue live for us to do it. So we'll take a mo, take a motion for January twenty-seventh, Thursday, for a public hearing for the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Fest slash Goshen Golf Club. Kim is a first, Laura is a second. Any discussion?
Sorry, Neil, do we wanna, do we wanna bump it down to, or bump it down to seven o'clock, maybe?
That's exactly what I was gonna ask. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the problem, guys, is when we do that, I, 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 I love the theory, but we, we've been doing seven thirty for like twenty years, and then some days, it's like, oh, it's seven o'clock, and then, then we did it one on Tuesday. I, I would like to stick with seven thirty. I think getting out of this habit is nice for us, but the public knows, and our website says seven thirty, and then someone goes, I was late, and personally, I think I'd like to stick. I hear your point. Half hour earlier, but does anyone want to make a motion for seven thirty, for seven o'clock?
I'll make a motion for seven.
Okay, so anyone want to second it? All right, Dennis wants to second it. Anyone want to vote for seven o'clock?
Come on.
One, two, three. Motion denied. All right, seven thirty.
We tried. We tried.
Well, that was parliamentary fun. Always awesome. We never did a, we never did a nested motion before. That was awesome. All right, good try, good try. All right, so we'll stick with seven thirty. All in favor, say aye. All right, great. All right, so we have a public hearing. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We will see you guys then.
Thank you.
We'll see you before then at the site visit.
Yes, thank you, and I hope to see you, Dan. Thanks. All right. Last order of business, Hudson Highlands Reserve. Discussion of the final environmental impact statement. Let me get my tome over here.
Okay. All right, do we have the applicants here?
Yes, Mr. O'Rourke and Mr. Gross.
Great. All right, good. So look, our, our plan tonight is to give you some pretty clear direction on the FEIS and whether we can, as we try to and I know, thank you, Mr. O'Rourke and Mr. Gross for working with AKRF. We've had a lot of bounces between the two of you or your two organizations to get there. So, do we ruin, okay, so what I'd like to do, I, I think, I think we can let AKRF make some opening remarks about where they are with this thing. I know, Steve, you've, you've taken some comments, you've made their edits, they've requested, and then it's time for the board members, which we have not done, to give some comments about what they're seeing in the FEIS and changes they require, and frankly, some guidance from them about the project and where they stand. I think you deserve that at this point, and Mr. O'Rourke has asked for that, and that's what we're gonna do. So I'll, I'll let Chris and Aaron make any comments they'd like to make about where we are with the FEIS based on their professional viewpoint, and then we're gonna go by board member, one by one, to get, a, any specific comments, any edits of changes on the FEIS, and then get their views individually about the project, okay? That's the plan. So, Chris or Aaron?
I could start. Good evening, Aaron Werner, AKRF. Just to give a, just a step back for how we got to tonight, we, at the November meeting, we offered some comments to the applicant with also some guidance about how to improve the voice of the document. We followed up after that with a meeting with the applicant and the applicant's attorney, where we, you know, discussed the approach to get these issues resolved. We gave, like I said, some example language of how to improve voice throughout. We didn't, it was a summary. It wasn't really meant to be, these are the ones, these are our voice comments. But they went ahead with that. They made some revisions. They submitted it again on December second. So the December sixteenth memo that was out today included some additional, what we're calling the final comments to get the voice issues resolved, because we didn't think that all of them were addressed in the manner that was acceptable to us. So you'll see a lot of the comments in that memo are just, here's the language we would like you to insert. And we communicated with the applicant's consultant yesterday and today on the edits, and they've actually resubmitted a red-line version to us about an hour before the meeting. So we're gonna take a look at that to make sure that everything's been addressed. And as our memo states, if, if those are addressed, we're, we have no objection to the planning board moving to accept the document. The, the next step in the process would be, obviously, accepting it, a notice of completion would be issued. And then we would work on a finding statement within thirty days of the filing of the FEIS.
Chris, anything to add? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, Ryan, anything to add?
No, I have nothing more.
Okay. Steve, you want to say anything?
Well, AKRF has a number of comments. My understanding, based on what Aaron has said, is that if the revisions that they propose are incorporated into the existing draft of the FEIS, then the FEIS will be in a condition where this board could accept it. It's not currently in that condition, but what you could do is accept it subject to incorporation of the AKRF comments into the draft FEIS. And once that happens and that document is filed, that's when the thirty-day timeframe to adopt your finding statement would start to run. I'm not sure that even if we do that, depends on when they file, obviously, assuming they're willing to make those changes, that we would, the planning board would still be in a position at its next meeting to be within the thirty-day window for adoption of the finding statement. So you may need to ask if, if you go this route and you adopt the finding statement subject to incorporation of those comments for an extension of the thirty-day timeframe to the next planning board meeting.
Well, that, that's assuming the board has no edits themselves tonight.
Uh, yes, of course. In the event that there were additional edits, those would have to be incorporated as well. You're right.
And to add to, Steve, you know, the thirty-day clock would begin once a clean, you know, hard copy, digital copy is sent to the town for review at the town board by any of the public, and it's posted to the town's website. And that notice of completion with instructions for the involved agencies and interested agencies to review it is sent out. That's when the thirty-day clock would begin on the findings. So that could happen, you know, a few days from now, if we, if we've reviewed, once we review their edits and we accept them, or anything that comes out tonight from the board, if we tell them, yes, this is good, go ahead and go to print, and then that comes into the town and it's ready to be distributed. That's when the thirty-day clock starts in findings. So I want to make that clear.
Helpful. And then the last thing is, Steve, before we go wrong by the board members, I did want you to just describe for the board, the linkage is, if at all, between accepting the FEIS and what the finding statement would then provide or state.
Working on that backwards, if you will. The finding statement makes determination as to whether all of the identified potential significant adverse environmental impacts, and they're listed in the EIS, have been mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. It doesn't mean possible. It isn't a wish list. It means you take a look at the significant, potential significant adverse environmental impacts that you've identified, and you say, what's reasonable, given the proposed development of this property, is adequate to do to mitigate these identified impacts. Now, the EIS, and particularly the FEIS, spells out what is proposed mitigation measures in regard to each of those potential identified impacts. So when you read through the FEIS, if you come to a potential identified potential significant impact, and the EIS says we propose these measures, and these measures adequately address that concern, and this board adopts the FEIS that says that, the board will not then be in a position to adopt a finding statement that says, no, that potential significant adverse environmental impact wasn't adequately addressed, and they have to do X, Y, and Z in addition to this. So you're bound by the FEIS. It is this board's document. So you're gonna want to look carefully at what the content of that is, because it's going to shape the finding statement that you adopt.
That's right. Board member questions on that?
Who's, who's going ahead? Me?
I'm sorry? I think Kim can go ahead.
Right. So if we say tonight, pick whatever AKRF, you know, has presented, and, you know, it's all fixed, then we're, we're, there's nothing else we can do. Is that right? Is that what you just said, Steve?
What I said is that the finding statement must be based on what's in the FEIS. So once that FEIS is done, you should have read it over already. But I mean, once it's the, it's the final changes and everything are incorporated, you, you must look at that carefully, because that's what's gonna determine what's in your finding statement. Your finding statement is gonna say, there was this potential adverse impact, and this one, and this one, and this one. And they propose to mitigate it with this, and this, and this, and this. And if you can, based on what's in the FEIS, say, well, yeah, but it's not enough. That's fine, you could do that. But if what's in the FEIS indicates, you know, the, the facts in it and the, the logic in it indicates that that is enough, it would be arbitrary and capricious of you to say, well, no, it's not, because this is the document that you're going to base your findings on. The FEIS isn't the finding statement, but is the basis for the finding statement. So you get to, you know, read through and, and, you know, to some extent interpret. I mean, to the extent they can reasonably be used as interpretation, the facts and the arguments that are in there, but whatever your finding statement is, it must have a basis in the FEIS and, and the EIS, I mean, you know, both of them together, there's studies and information, graphs, terms, oh my gosh.
So how do we, you just run us through how we craft this finding statement?
How you draft it?
How we craft it, yeah.
Oh, craft it. Well, what you're going to do, they're, they're pretty much formulaic, is you, you have, you know, a description of the, the project, and you can, you know, take that as, you know, language in the EIS gives you a pretty good description. You don't want to take it word for word, but you'll use that as a description, and then you'll say, we identified the following potential adverse, significant adverse environmental impacts, and we'll listen down. And then we'll say, in regard to this, they propose to do that. In regard to this, they say nothing needs to be done. In regard to this, they're supposed to do that. And you'll state whether it's adequate or not. But if you want to state that it's, it's adequate, and then the FEIS doesn't show that it's adequate, you got a problem. If you want to state that it's inadequate, and the FEIS shows that it is adequate, again, you have a problem. You need to ground. You need to ground, ground, yeah, ground your findings on what's in the EIS. That's the document that you're basing your determination on.
Clear it all? Go ahead, Rick. Do you want to finish off?
Yes, if I may, just, just to, um. I guess. Further explain the issue because it's a very, very good question that's being asked about how do you craft this, but. You know, as, as Steve mentioned, logic, uh, is a very important component and equally. Important is reasonableness and there's. Lots of case law that talks about the rule of reason when you're dealing with, with the State Environmental Quality Review Act and. And the actions and things that occur in accordance with, with SECRIM and. A framework is. You have a DEIS. There was a proposed action that was put forth. Uh, that proposed action did have a bunch of things. It had. An equestrian center. It had certain open space. It had certain locations for improvements and disturbances. And then what happens through that environmental review process and it happened here. Uh, there is, shall we say, in some respects, an evolution of, of a plan. And it should be being responsive to the comments that have been raised. You know, from the sponsor's perspective, the elimination of the equestrian center was a big deal. And I think from an environmental impact perspective, it was a very big deal because of all the. Uh, attendant issues related to having a, an equestrian center. So too, the, the, you know, the shortening of the road, uh, the relocation from.
Can we not get into the actual, you, you, we, we, Steve was talking about how to do a finding statement related to the FEIS. You're now getting into the merits of all the things you've changed. So can we just focus on the question? You, you wanted to amplify something Steve was asked, was already answered.
And, and I, forgive me, I, I didn't mean to digress or. Uh, go off, off the rails here, but what I'm, what I'm talking about is logic and reason is a very, very important component. And you, you're absolutely right. You have to look at the facts. You have to look at the circumstances and see what's happened. And, and, um, and that's all I'm saying. That's. Uh, there has to be, there cannot be a disconnect in terms of the evolutionary process that you've just gone through.
Okay. So that the help, that helpful, um, acknowledgement of what Steve said. So let's just, so any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Kim, for asking that question. Other questions of Steve? Process wise and the linkage between acceptance of this document and writing the finding statement? No more questions among the board? Okay.
Chairman, can I, can I just add something?
Yeah.
I was just going to say that, you know, to, to, back to Kim's question, I think, you know. AKRF is assuming we would, we would take the first crack at drafting that finding statement for you to review. Um, it wasn't something that we were going to have the board write, um, but it is in the, again, it's something that's in the voice of the board. Um, it's the lead agency's document. There'll, there'll be a lot of. Phrasing such as the planning board finds this, the planning board finds that. Um, you know, and it's all tied to the FEIS conclusions. Um, and to a lot of, to a lot of extent, the DEIS too, which outlines, you know, the original project and a lot of the mitigation, which is. Some of it's gone because the equestrian center is gone, but a lot of the mitigation that they're proposed by design in the project as well as what they're doing. Uh, you know, required by code like the SWIP and other things for mitigation are still proposed. So. Um, you know, just wanted to make that clear that it, we would, we would draft that for you if, if you want us to. I assume you do.
I'm going to make, uh, I'm going to make Heidi right. So, all right. So let's get going here. Speaking, speaking of, so we're, board members, I'm going to now turn to you in order, in sequence to just raise. To answer two questions. One, do you have any specific items in the FEIS that you would like to see changed? Not knowing that it is not possible for us to. Balance that against what Aaron and, and Chris have suggested. So any specific edits? And secondly, to give any. Indications at one level above of how you're feeling about the project relative to our SECRIM findings earlier on. So I'll, I'll start with Heidi and we'll just go in reverse alphabetical order. Uh, for fun, coming to me last, um, as the chair. So Heidi, you have the floor.
Okay. And I understand that, um, what we're looking at is whether or not, uh, the applicant is adequately mitigated. Um, the concerns that were raised with respect to the DEIS. And, um, I, and I take the applicant's point that. Um, some changes were made to the project. In my opinion, they, they are adequate, are not adequate to mitigate the. The problems that were, were, um. Pointed out about the project. Uh, I, I think there should be fewer houses. Um, I think the houses should be pulled back from the pond more. I think that the wildlife corridors should be more. Clear. Um, I think some of the concerns that were raised about, uh, the, the vegetation and wildlife. Um, have not been sufficiently mitigated and, um. And I'm, it's not a wish list. I, I think. Uh, you know, they've come some way, but a little more way would be, would be, uh. Might do it, but it isn't there. Um, so, and then I still feel like there's concerns about the water resources on the site that I. Don't feel like have been answered, whether or not there are seeps. Um, how water's moving on the site. I don't feel like I know exactly. What's happening with the amphibious life on the site other than the pond. Um, and, uh, that, and I think that that issue has not really been mitigated sufficiently. Um, I also have concerns. I know that the applicant has said that the, um, the site. You know, will maintain a rural feel in terms of the landscaping. But I, I don't think there's been mitigation of the possib, of, um. The concern that's, that's been, was raised, um, with respect to the site, that it's going to be. You know, uh, pop, uh, lawns, lawns and houses without. Consideration of the commu, of the rural character of the area. Um, so I don't think that that, uh, concern has been adequately mitigated either. And, uh, and so in it, and then I'm. I'm not sure what's happening in terms of, uh, the road access. I think that's still a big open item. I'm not sure. You know, what's. Happening in terms of road access or traffic in, and I'm not saying that that was a DEIS issue. But I feel like that issue still is a big unknown about the project that creates uncertainty. Um, so those are my feelings. I think, um, you know, I under, do understand, uh, there. I'm not saying there isn't going to be, be a development here. But I feel, feel like the, you know, uh. The concerns that have been raised have not, have not been mitigated. Um, to the extent that's practicable and, uh, the pulling back a little bit of some of the houses from the pond is just not sufficient. Um, to mitigate those concerns. I can't, I mean, I. I had put posters next to a gazillion items in the first binder I got, tried to transfer them to binder number two. Which was supposed to be a red line. I mean, I can't, I, I, that wasn't entirely successful. So I can't point to specific page, chapter and verse, um, but certainly with respect to the responses. Um. It, my concerns do not have to do with the editing and the style of the, of the language. I, I. I know that the FEIS is going to, is supposed to be our document, so I very much appreciate. The consultant's work in trying, in honing the language and making sure that. You know, that the language of the, um, the FEIS would be. Um, the, you know, the language of the planning board. Uh, but aside from that issue, um. I just think there is major concerns that remain unmitigated. Um, to the extent practicable. So though, and I, you know, I, I, to some degree, I would point to areas where AKRF in its. Write-up has said, this issue was only partially addressed. Uh, many of the items that I would point out have been raised by commenters, including the Hudson Highlands Land Trust. And others, um, I just don't think that they've been mitigated to the, the extent practicable.
Thank you, Heidi, for that. Uh, next in the alphabetical reverse order is Mr. Neil Toleman.
Thanks. Thanks, Chairman. I think we're, um, I think we're very close. I, um. I, I, I do hear some of the other board members' concerns about. The, um, the density around the pond. I think that if you could. I'm looking at lot 24. Specifically and, and. Twenty, I think it's 20 and 20, I think it's 20 and 24. I think if you could either pull them back more from the.
Neil, do me a favor since, just use, just use a clock. If the pond is a clock and.
Okay.
Moon is noon, which one you talking about?
I'm talking about 11 o'clock and 3 o'clock.
11 o'clock and 3 o'clock. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
So I think if you could either pull back. Or eliminate one of those lots, I think you'd be a whole lot closer to. I, I, then. I, I see the concerns about the ponds. I recognize they have pulled them back. But, um, I think, I, I think that might be something you might want to consider.
Neil, anything in particular from the FEIS you want to highlight?
No, that's, that's my only take on that. It's fine.
Okay. All right. Uh, Laura O'Connell?
Um, thanks, Neil. Um, so I just want to echo both Heidi and Neil. Um, I do agree that the density of the houses are still slightly too dense, um, but it's well within reason. Um, but I am a little concerned because I, I did read the, the memo that came from AKRF and, um. I want to echo Heidi's concern that I think that, like, as we're all saying. The statement is almost there, but it's not a hundred percent there and it's not reading as that. Um, so. You know, I'm just going to go on good faith and assume that the applicant is going to take. AKRF's comments into consideration and adjust the language as such. Um, but I don't know if I would be able to blindly say and vote and agree. Um, and say that that's the case until we would see the document.
Sounds like you're saying you're not, you're not comfortable approving, accepting this document this evening?
There's just a little too much in the AKRF memo. That, you know, that doesn't make me feel comfortable. Um, to start the timer, so to speak. Yeah.
Fair, fair. And other, just I want to press you a bit more. So Neil was very specific about a house around the, the pond. So was Heidi. Is there a specific? Is there a specific environmental impact you think they could make? They could actually further. Uh, mitigate by doing, is there an action you would be recommending to them as a? Hey, do this thing and it would make you feel less, it would feel like then you've done the maximum extent practicable. Is there anything you recommend?
Uh, no, I can just echo what, um, what Neil said. I mean, you know, he pointed out the two locations and it's, you know. I mean, I agree with that. Um, I'm just more concerned about the memo itself and the, just the language overall.
Thank you. Right. Uh, Peter?
So what we're going to do here is really just talk about the specifics of the environmental problems, not our. Our, our sense of the document itself.
We're doing both. Those are the two twin questions. Question one, anywhere you want, is specific things in the FEIS.
Right.
You not feel comfortable with the way it's written? And then secondly, taking it up a level. Thing, your feeling, your view at this point on the SECRIM and the, and whether they have, and Steve can say the line far better than I can, where they. Done what they need to do to the maximum extent practically.
Okay. Um, the only real, uh, practical thing that I, that I felt was, uh. There was a long discussion about the wildlife corridor and I don't think that that really ever, uh. Seemed to have, uh, found a, a, a good, common ground answer. There was the. Narrow one and there was the guy who was talking about the great sheet of, uh. Of how wildlife move through an environment. And, uh, I tended to think that the, uh. The, uh, the person who, uh, wrote the thing about the sheet kind of movement. Um, tended to kind of win the day and I didn't think that the, uh, wildlife corridor, uh, was really sufficient for my, uh, comfort at this point.
Chris and Aaron, can you identify what section Peter's talking about?
It's a. Long section in the environmental, um, part. Uh, really page 136, 135. This is on the, uh, the new, the new big, uh. Binder that we received. Uh, the, uh. The comment was coming from Clements, uh, most of them that, uh, seemed to be fairly pungent and, uh. Observant and I was kind of won over by. Uh, the rest of my comments are pretty much just, um. How I kind of felt about it. I, when I was reading at the beginning on page 94, uh, about. Uh, lighting and so forth, and it was, uh, it was kind of bounced back to the. Uh, housing, the HOA, and I don't have a lot of faith in HOAs. Uh, sticking to the, the rules of the game, uh, to kind of do what they want once, uh, you know, nobody's looking. So I don't know what kind of fertilizer gets put down or how much or, or things like that. So I, I felt uncomfortable with the reliance on the HOA. I don't think that the document itself had much of a feel, a forward looking feel where we're going to be. In encountering a profound environmental change in the next couple of decades. And, uh, and this is going to be a different landscape in a couple of decades. And I think that that is something that needs to be. Uh, at least thought about or brought into the picture, uh, what's going to happen to the. Particular trees. These are all dying because of a particular bug or a particular temperature or something like that. Um. I didn't, it, it, it felt, uh, that there wasn't really a sense of there's going to be a tomorrow and what's this going to look like tomorrow? And, uh, and what's that pond going to look like tomorrow? Because most of the ponds around here, they get built up around, eutrophied fairly quickly. And, uh, but they have put in, there have been a lot of, uh, uh, good responses to the AKRF, uh. Questions about that. Um, two final things, uh, do these as fast as I can. If we want this document to be in our voice and to be our document. There are a couple of things here that certainly aren't my voice. Um, on page 121, there's a comment that says, uh. That it will not widen the suburban land use type beyond what exists immediately to the south and north of the project site. Well, frankly, Route 9 to the north and south of the project site is not something I aspire to. Nor do, uh, I feel it's, uh, something that we want to, uh, stake our community character on. So, uh, adding another subdivision can't be excused or, or, uh. Given a right simply because somebody else done something else across the street. And, uh, and it looks good, good in that way. And speaking of that, my final comment is, uh. It felt very combative. Uh, this is a conservation subdivision and, uh. And something that should actually be embraced and not felt like. Here's a question to something that you've done. Well, we've taken care of that. We've done that. We've done the best we could or it won't, uh, won't fit into our financial picture. It doesn't feel positive, doesn't feel good, doesn't feel like it's a project that, uh, somebody really wants to see done right. And, uh, certain amount of defensiveness and so on, and the language I'd like to see changed. And that's all I have to say.
Aaron, have you been able to capture those comments of Peter's?
Yeah. Can you tell me the, the page again and the response number that you just mentioned?
To which one?
Um, you mentioned a specific page of the FEIS and you, um, where you didn't like the language and the response number.
Page one twenty-one with response thirty-three B point five-six, third paragraph. The comments on the HOA and, you know, making sure that they did everything right was on ninety-four, ninety-three. And the other ones were, were general ideas.
So within three B, three B fifty-six, they did make some updates to that based on our comments recently. You haven't seen this yet, but it just came back. Can you just point to the sentence you're concerned with?
Yeah, it's a third paragraph, the short one that starts with thus, thus while the proposed action will introduce development. It will not widen the suburban land use type beyond what exists. And what exists? It's not necessarily. What everybody aspires to.
I gotta tell you, and I'm not sure that, I mean, Peter's comments are certainly well-taken as far as that goes, but I think. Many of them are just kind of general, this is how I feel about the project and trying to give some direction on it. I don't know that they need to be incorporated into the, or I don't feel they're capable of being incorporated to the FBIIS. For example, I, I, I'm not criticizing in any way, Peter, I can't be wrong here. But I mean, a subjective feel that an HOA may not live up to its obligations is.
Right.
You know, all well and good, but it's, it's not really the kind of thing you can hang your hat on in an EIS and say. Well, you know, they proposed to have an HOA enforce this and we don't find that adequate because we just don't trust HOAs. I mean. If, if they've proposed it and they're, they have, you know, a binding agreement for the HOA to do whatever it says it's going to do. And it's enforceable, I, I think you have to take that at face value. You could say I'm leery of it, that's all well and good, but I don't know that that's part of the EIS.
Yeah, I, I, I thought the number of things that I said, you couldn't end your hat on at all. I just, they were, uh. It was a feeling that, you know, if this is going to be, you know, our document, you know, I just wanted to. Kind of air out the atmosphere, you know, that's all.
So that one, you know, that paragraph on for three B fifty-six about widening the. Suburban land use type beyond what exists immediately to north, south and north of the site. We didn't have them update any of that. I think what they were trying to say there, and I don't want to speak for the writer, but it's just, I think. Saying that introducing residential use east of Route nine isn't going to be much different from what else is east of Route nine. There's residential to the north and to the south in a similar suburban setting. And that's pretty much what that was trying to say. If you prefer, they soften that by saying this project sponsor believes. So that it's in their words and, you know, you're acknowledging what they believe with this project. You know, that's something they can do. They've done that throughout this to address a lot of our comments.
Okay.
I, I, I did want to make one editorial remark before I go in, which is, I, I actually did appreciate whether that was from AKRF or the sponsor themselves. The notion that says the sponsor, et cetera, et cetera, the project sponsor, I think that's very helpful language. Because so much of this is the sponsor's opinion or the sponsor's actions. No matter whether it says it's our document or not, I think that inclusion of that subject is very helpful to me. I thought that was ver- whoever, whoever's artifice that was. Very helpful and thank you. And Peter, thank you for your thoughts.
Okay.
Okay, Dennis?
Yes, excuse me. I believe really at this time, the adjustments that were made. Based on concerns that the community had, that the board had, that the applicant has really made. Reasonable adjustments to their plan. I like to see the changes made based on the, the comments AKRF, because there are the partially addressed items. So I'm taking it that once this red line document is distributed, we can read that and have a little bit more comfort with it. But at this point in time, I, I truly believe that the applicant has made the adjustments that. I, I feel are very reasonable.
And you have no, you know, changes, no, no edits the FEIS?
No, not, not that I see nothing that jumped out at me.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Kim?
Okay, so. I agree with Laura that the tone, you know, that the, the editing for voice, all of that, you know, we, this is the. The third iteration for that, and I think it's the fifth AKRF memo. So, you know, I'd really like to see all of that clarified before I would. Vote to approve, to accept this. I have a couple of, I, I just want to say something about the whole issue of suburban. This is supposed to be a conservation subdivision, which is supposed to be different from a suburban layout. So if we're comparing it to suburban, I'm, I'm just, that's a little jarring. If, if we're saying, you know, that it's no worse than suburban or whatever, it's like suburban. You know, that, that one of the complaints about this particular layout has been that the houses aren't particularly clustered, that they are on, you know, one acre lots. And that's more like a, you know, suburban development than a true conservation subdivision clustered development. So that's my comment about that. I would like to ask, I, because I'm, I'm still trying to understand how the entry road. Fits into all of this and I want to ask Steve about that. Because I seem to remember there was a, an issue where we needed to have approval from the town board to change the zoning. For a particular part of the land in order to get the density that they were looking for or to meet town road standards or whatever. And I don't know where that fits into our assessment here.
Well, I can't speak to the roadway. I can tell you that earlier on, and I, I kind of think it's still part of this. They wanted a certain density and so they wanted to change. Like an industrial small portion of, of the land that's actually going to be open space to residential. I, they may have gotten rid of that because they don't need it for the number of lots or it might still be part of the project. I'm just not sure where we are on. The, the proposal to have a, a zoning change in regard to density at this point. The roadway I didn't think was an issue anymore. I think maybe Ron and AKRF could speak more to that, but. That's, that's where we stand on the zoning.
Okay, so I guess. So Ron, when you did your calculations, you know, the calculations for how many houses, you know, they're allowed to have, didn't have anything to do with. Whether or not there was going to be an equestrian center. Correct? The equestrian center was just sort of laid on top of the existing density calculation.
That's correct.
Yeah, so removing the equestrian center doesn't change that density calculation. And I'd like to know, you know, if in order to get the appropriate density calculation, that zoning change has to happen.
Yes, it does. The, you remember the original calc that were done and, and by now they're some years old. There's a small bit of the project along Route nine that's. Commercial industrial zone. I think it's a, I can't recall the zoning designation, but they're proposing that that be absorbed into the residential. Zoning district and, and they're basing that lot acreage in order to justify two additional lots for the project. So when we did our original counts, we were saying that if the zoning. Amendment was approved by the town board, they would wind up with twenty-four lots. If it was not authorized, they would be limited to twenty-two lots. And then the lot count is still in question. We're, we're working with the advocates consultant to get the. Appropriate plan information so we can verify that lot count. They, they still believe it's a twenty-five. Lot count that's permitted and that will be resolved. And it's addressed in this FEIS by saying that, that, that's the subject of further review that'll happen subsequent to the completion of the environmental review.
And is that, and that's possible? You know, because it seems like if we accept the FEIS, we don't get to change any.
Work, I'm sorry, is, is that the secret review is being based upon the presumption that they, because it has to be for secret purposes. You understand, that they will get the zoning change. Because if they don't get the zoning change, the more intense secret review will still cover. The lesser amount of lots. So what's going to happen is you're going to go through SECR, then, and, and make a determination based on the, and this is the wrong term. But I mean, worst case scenario, if you will, in terms of the number of lots. It isn't really worse, but I mean, most lots. And then when secret is complete, they would go to the town board petition for the zoning change. If they get the zoning change, they go ahead with the proposed development. Under the secret review that took place for the, the highest number of lots. And if, if they don't get the zoning change, then of course the larger secret review would also cover the less number of lots.
The permitted density is going to be based on what's allowed in the zoning ordinance for conservation subdivisions. Going to come back to that formula.
So what does that mean? So how many is?
Well, no, that's, that's, I'm just describing it as, as there's a discrepancy between the applicant's calculations and my own. And, and that'll be finalized pretty quickly, but it still has not been resolved. So it's. It's either twenty-four, twenty-five lots if they get the zoning change and it'll be twenty-two or twenty-three lots. If the town board does not approve the change. But, but I'll have that tied down pretty shortly.
Okay, and what about the road?
The road, they're carrying a maximum grade along the entrance of, of twelve percent. The internally, all the project roads have been upgraded and no longer need any variances from the town board.
Okay.
So they've addressed that concern.
That's, that's, okay, so, and if the DOT doesn't give permission for this road to happen, then that's that. You know, there's the.
Right, the, the whole concept of the project is predicated on Route nine access. If they don't obtain a DOT permit. The project is envisioned, I can't move forward.
Okay. And. Our approval doesn't affect DOT approval?
No, no.
Like DOT isn't going to assume that because we approved something, they should approve something?
No, no, any action you take, if you, if you move in advance of having receipt of the, that approval, it would be conditioned upon that receipt. So the plans would not be signed until all approvals and all other conditions are satisfied.
Okay. All right, so let me just check my note here. So I, too, have a concern about the number of houses around the pond. I think there should be at least one fewer. If they end up with this, you know, twenty-four houses as opposed to twenty-five houses, perhaps one of the houses around the pond could be that lesser house. For protecting the wildlife court. And I guess that's. You know, other than the, the, you know, I, I really don't feel comfortable approving anything I haven't read when it comes to tone.
Very inconsistent set of voices from the board. Thank you, Kim. All right, I have eight comments about the FEIS. Mr. Gross and company, take out your hymnals, please. The cover sheet, we have not, we clearly have a disconnect between the number of houses on this little property. Ron Gaynor has said it's twenty-four. Couple of years ago and we were still sitting over in the. Library, we said it was twenty-four. You've written on the first page, approval of a twenty-five lot subdivision. I will str- ask you to strike the words twenty-five and lot. You want to write approval of a conservation subdivision, that's fine. But it is clear that we are not in agreement on how many lots you may have. I am not telling you you're wrong. But I'm telling you that there is a disconnect between what Mr. Gaynor is saying and you've, you've gone to lengths to explain that he's wrong in his analysis. And we'll get to that in a minute, but I would like that stricken. That's page, that's, so that's one. Page fifteen. There are several phrases in here that I don't like. I will describe them. Paragraph number three, under what says response two point two. The last word in the paragraph, access to the pond will remain unencumbered. I don't know if that's true. It's unencumbered. Unencumbered means there's no encumbrances. There are a bunch of houses on the, that are going to ring the pond still. Yes, you took some away, but at least a hundred and eighty degrees of the pond. Have houses that are between the road and the pond. That is an encumbrance. So in my opinion, it is not unencumbered, the access to the pond.
Which, which response was that?
Page fifteen, third paragraph, the one that says response two point zero is literally the last word in the paragraph.
Two point two zero, first paragraph, last sentence.
Two point two zero, thank you.
Last sentence should be stricken. Access to the power will remain unencumbered. That's not correct. Next, next paragraph. In the one, two, three, four, fifth line, it says the location of the proposed homes. Also has no significant impact on east-west ecological connectivity of the Ulmer Pond. I don't know if it has no significant impact. I don't know if that's true. I think there is impact. I don't know if it's significant, but I think I'd strike that sentence.
We have changed that wording to read the project sponsor maintains that the modified layout would have no significant impact. On east-west ecological connectivity with Ulmar Pond.
That's fine.
So we've taken ownership of, of that opinion.
Okay, next sentence. This, this phrase you've used a lot, and I don't know who, who is your superlative broker, but you like to use superlatives. You write, this connection is preserved in its entirety. With the preservation, blah, blah, blah. I would strike that, 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 that clause. That is gratuitous in its entirety. I don't think you need that. I certainly don't want that written if it's supposed to be my, my voice. Because I don't think it's in its entirety and that phrase you'll hear also in another one of my comments. So that's two comments done. Next, page seventeen. I don't like the tone of this whole paragraph, response two point two four. Mr. Gaynor has been serving this town for decades. And he's been the voice of this board for a long time. Then Mr. Gaynor is asserted to be wrong. I'm not saying he's infallible. We all are fallible. Ron, less fallible, but. I think it is unclear that it's actually true that he overstated the areas of the wetlands. I had not heard Ron tell me he's done that. I've asked him a number of times. I think we're getting a little accusatory in the tone here. I personally don't love that language. And so similarly, the project designers revisited the convention and they're conclusion. So that's fine. I think it's important though for Aaron and Chris, this paragraph have a sentence say, start with. Ron Gaynor, the town engineer, has identified through a series of calculation that this, this lot or this project is due twenty-four houses. However, then you can have the neck, the first par- first sense of the paragraph is then fine. However, the project sponsors did their own. And they came up with twenty-five and that's an objective assessment. This is not, again, of course, if I was Ulysses and I was spending all this money. I would want, I would write it the same exact way he did, but since it's our document, I would like to write in a more balanced way. Because it makes it sound like Ron did something wrong and I don't know if that's been asserted yet. Certainly not proven to me. Okay.
Neil, I just want to clarify on that response two twenty-four. I'm, I'm seeing a sentence that says both consultants, meaning both Mr. Gaynor and, and us and we. Both consultants overstated the area of wetlands with the, within the OSO district. I think Glenn could speak to that, but I think he found an error that. Both, we, we all made. That was what the comment was. We all made the same mistake.
Okay, I don't know, I don't know. I assume the consultants were referring to AKRF. I don't know who they were referring to, just as consultants.
No, no, it's a, it's how we wrote the response. I'm looking, I'm, unless there's another sentence I'm missing. But I'm seeing this sentence, it says.
I'm sorry, let me, I did write that response. It wasn't intended to be accusatory. It was intended to point out that we both made a mistake. We both overstated the, the, the wetlands. I mean, I don't mind changing it if you want to make it softer, but. I think the position is that, and Ron just talked about that a couple of minutes ago. We have a difference in the way we approach the calculation and we think that was, that was to our detriment.
Ron, you want to say anything here?
Again, as, as I touched on earlier, acknowledge what their position is. These calculations go back some years and we've always been willing to revisit the calc. And that's, that's, I think what the intent of this text should stay. Because once we, once we get through the secret process, we'll, we'll go through this issue one last time and then we'll come to some clear determination.
Retaining it as long as it begins with a sentence says, Ron Gaynor, the town engineer has developed an assessment that says it's twenty-four houses. We're, we're, we're avoiding that entirely. We need to assert that there's a difference of opinion at the calculation.
Right.
Okay, let's keep going. Page 21. Your response to Ron's point about lot size, which has been mentioned by every board member tonight, I think all but one maybe. You mentioned in here a lot about, you basically have said, quote, in this response 2.3, you're quoting the code. Conservation subdivisions may include a variety of lot sizes ranging from large farm to estate lots. Or state lots to small hamlet sized lots. And then the sentence after it says, the project sponsor decide that incorporating large farm, blah, 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 will be contrary. So you address. Why you don't want the large, you don't address why you don't want the quote, small hamlet sized lots. Which of course you could do. You could have a cul-de-sac that is four townhouses put together, which would be more in keeping with this notion. You've chosen not to go that route. And I think it's important to acknowledge that. Meaning a sentence would be incorporated, the project sponsor said they incorporate large or farm or state lot to be contrary to suburban clustering. And probably something like, and the project sponsor has chosen not to consider small hamlet sized lots. That's factual and that's, you, you can't have it both ways. You can't say, I'm going to not do one thing in the code, but I don't want to talk about the other thing the code suggests. So that would be a comment I'd like to add there. AKRF, is that cool or clear?
It is.
Next one, page 45. This is tied to Kim's point earlier about the road. I'm going into paragraph, uh, I'm in response 2.85. The second paragraph of 2.85. Paragraph that starts with denies dot applies significant. You with me, Steve?
No, I'm still getting there.
Okay, let me know.
Uh, 2.85?
Yes. Page 45.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on a version on my phone that has no page numbers. That's why I can't pass on response numbers. Okay, 2.85, I'm there.
All right, jeez. Will Ulysses get this guy a laptop? Come on. All right. So in the sentence that there's, oh, in the sentence that says ultimately, the project sponsor is confident. Blah, blah, blah. I, why are we including a prospective opinion? I think that is an unnecessary and again gratuitous remark. That you're confident is not a point of fact. That is a point of just unnecessary conjecture and I don't think it's appropriate for a document like this. I, I would strike the whole sentence. That you can get in the mind of the state DOT is shocking because I can't, I work with her and him on the MTA board. So let's strike that sentence, please. Okay, three more. Page 47. Similar point that I just made, this is response 2.88, Steve. I don't concur. The, I'm, I'm, I'm reacting to the 123456 row. Quote, this statement suggests that NICE dot will grant access. Now I read the statement, I don't get, I don't at all interpret that this statement suggests they'll grant access. All they said was coordination will be necessary between the department and the project sponsor. Of course it'll be necessary. Coordination is the core of having one agency touch another or one property to another. I would not take that to suggest anything that they'll grant access. So I would strike that whole sentence. Is that clear? Did we capture that one?
I got it.
All right, cool. Page 97. Uh, again, in its entirety, this is response 3 Bravo dot 25, 3 Bravo dot 25. Um, this is about two thirds of the way down that paragraph. It states, it starts with Omar corridor in its entirety. This is, sorry, in fact, the design develops in 2014, follows this guidance from the creek wetlands, Omar Pond in its entirety. I would get rid of the in its entirety. I don't think that's actually exactly true. And then again, you use the same phrase again on the next page in its entirety.
Where was the first one? I just got there. I just got there. That was a long way to go.
I, I seriously, I think you brought a knife to a gunfight. You need to bring a lap, you need to bring the, we all these printouts, dude. Um, response, 3B, I'm doing again.
I'm on one phone with the zoom and another phone with the, with the file.
We're doing it. All right. Three, this is 3B25. It is the sentence that is, in fact, the design developed since 2014, follows this guidance preserving the creek wetlands, Omar Pond in its entirety. I would strike in its entirety.
What, what paragraph are we in? It's a long response.
All right. Does anyone want to help, help Steve out here?
No, it's the first paragraph, Steve. It's the first.
All right, wait, wait.
Starts the way down, 2014.
Starts with in fact.
Yeah.
Which was actually struck.
Always brought the in fact. Okay, yeah.
I said I want in its entirety, God. I don't want in its entirety.
Um, it's a factual statement. Uh. Yeah, that's a factual statement.
Making is that in fact, the whole point we're making is that this board keeps telling you that having the houses in that area. Does impede possibly the corridor and you mitigated it.
Um, oh, okay. You're talking about corridor. Well, okay. Well, all right. Well, then that's a little difference of opinion, but we do absolutely preserve the entire. Creek wetlands, the creek, the wetlands and Omar Pond in its entirety. There's no question about that. Um, I guess it's how you wanted to find the width of the corridor.
What I'm asking you to do is, I, I, I am asking you to strike in its entirety. From that paragraph and two paragraphs tend to use the exact same language in its entirety. So those were my comments specific on the FEIS. Now, as far as the project. So I think I've alluded to these points before and all my fellow board members have made them. I think the, the, the southern portion of the pond. Is still, I think, has one too many houses on it for purposes of preserving the corridor. Through the lower end of the pond and across going from east to west. I, I know my colleague talked about the 11 o'clock and the three o'clock houses. To me, actually the one that's most challenging is the nine o'clock house. I mean, the one that's to the furthest west, due west one. Um, and then the second one is, as we brought up the point around uniformity, you intentionally did not look at the other modes that the concert, that conservation subdivision talks about, or at least the hamlet. You did not look at the farm sized ones, nor did you look at the hamlet sized ones. So I think that does lead to a situation where you do have a uniformity and that is not necessarily in keeping with the conservation subdivision. I'm not suggesting you need to make a bunch of townhouses now, so I'm not sure that actually is exactly what your plan is. But I think there is clearly a sentiment from this board over and over again, that the uniformity is not in keeping with the conservation subdivision. So that said, we've given you a lot of commentary and there's edits to be made and I'm pretty sure that no board member here is going to, maybe one. I don't think I could even get a mo- a motion in a second to vote on the acceptance tonight. At least that's my sense. I can take the straw poll or we can actually try it, but I don't think we can get that tonight. Given I think you've heard a number of people say they want to see the edits made. That said, more importantly for you as a project, you've heard some commentary from the board about what they. I would consider them minor changes that need to be done. Well, I mean, you may not feel they're minor, but changes made to feel, we get this board feeling more comfortable about the plan. So I'd like to suggest you take the edits that AKRF has made. You get a clean copy of this board that has clearly read the document. Um, and clearly is understanding, I hope communicate clearly how they feel about the secret situation. And that's enough input, I think, for you guys, for us to get back together in January to, to get us to an acceptance of the FEIS. That's my view at this point. I would like to ask my, I'm happy to poll the board members about whether they're willing to accept the document this evening.
Let me big one comment. Really necessary to do that. Um, Neil, I don't think it's necessary. We, look, th- this was a, a very productive discussion and, uh, and I mean that. In the sense that, you know, no one likes to take a lot of criticism, but nevertheless, it was constructive and there are things that we can work on and we can work on together. And all I would suggest is this, that. You know, we got comments yesterday afternoon at four o'clock and, and Steve worked into the night trying to, to respond as quickly as possible. What I would like to have, and I, we got it from the board, you, you polled them, we got their comments. We have now turned around more comments that, uh, that AKRF has. Instead of waiting until the, uh, like if, it's now December 15th.
If we get, I don't want to get, I don't want to get into a pissing contest about this. It's very clear from the AKRF guys. That they've given you the total comments for months on, I, I, I just don't want to get in the middle of it. I've tried very hard to get them to work with you. They've told, I've heard that, feel like I'm a school principal. I've heard their version of it. I'm hearing yours. The reality is it's not done enough where it needs to get done and I, it's, I'm not blaming, I just, this is where we are. And this is the craziness of this process where you guys author a document that's for us. That's the crazy part.
I, I, you know what? I, I'm with you a thousand percent. The only thing is the endless cycle of comments and going back and forth. I'm trying, just like you, once and for all, I think we now have it.
I'm trying too. I, they gave you, as I understand, several hundred comments, whatever it was, right at, a month ago. I said, you two all get, you three all get together, get in a room, figure it out. And then they came back and when we talked, they said there were still 300 of those comments not made. So what am I to do? Uh, you know, I said, was it two or was it 700? They said it's right in the middle. So that were not yet made. So I don't know what to tell you. They are, they're itemizing the things that you haven't done and they're not all being done. And as, as Kim and Laura both articulately said. They don't want to make a judgment on this thing until AKRF says it's all done. And so given what that said, plus the fact that they, we have not seen it, even though they, Steve worked it and thank you, Steve for that. And you've got additional comments tonight. I think that is an appropriate place for us to sit, call it, not call it a night. And I promise you, well, I can't promise you, I will implore AKRF to give you their remarks as soon as you turn it. And turn it as fast as can. Obviously we're going to Christmas and New Year's holiday and everyone's got to take a break, even the volunteers, this planning board, you got to take a break.
All right, Neil, if I can respond, uh, to one thing, um, I just want to let you know that. Um, we've already made the changes from the memo that you received today. I was working with, uh, Chris and Aaron yesterday. Uh, in fact, Chris and I were emailing each other into the night. The last email I got from, from Chris was at 2:14 AM. Um, and I worked till 4 AM last night and then we worked again today and I was on the phone for a long time with both of them. Uh, either together or individually. Um, uh, Chris and I were on the phone this evening until 6:30 PM. hashing out, uh, things or a couple of sentences that, uh, I wanted to make a case we're keeping or phrases and we hashed it out. Um, but we've already made, um, all the changes.
Steve, what I'm saying is the board, the tone of the board, you heard everyone. And I really don't want to keep rehashing this. I'm sorry, you worked so hard. The board is not comfortable voting on it until they see it done.
We, we, we agree.
I know, but Steve is, I understand Steve worked hard. I, if I went and complained to my clients about how hard I worked, they'd say, keep working. So let's, I don't know what to do.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing for you, uh, voting on it tonight. Uh, I'm letting you know that we have indeed been working together. And, and we have, and also I can tell you that we've been very responsive. I don't know, I, I'm confused by the comment about there were hundreds of comments because we have responded to every single comment that we have gotten.
Um, what, what.
Time out, time out.
Your colleague Rick just said to you that he'd like to have more advanced notice of the comments. So I don't know what to do with that except to say. We are going to see you here if you'd like at the next board meeting. You have the comments from AKRF, you have the comments from the board. If you get it to us at the appropriate time, the board will have the chance to then weigh in and then accept this document the next session. It also gives you a chance, time to think about from a project perspective. Hint, hint, some of the things the board has said to you. About what they would do to find the project more satisfying from an environmental perspective. And that's an opportunity you have to think about that in the interim.
Okay. Now, my only point was that we are working together.
All right.
Can I suggest one? I'm sorry. Can I just suggest that when. We did get a copy of the, we got a red line word document at 6:30 tonight that responds to our memo from today. There's additional comments that the board has tonight. I think what you would want to look at is a, is a similar track change word file. I think that would, that would help the, the board tremendously. It helped us a lot in expediting our review the last time around. So. That's what I would, I would recommend that, you know, they take the comments from tonight, add it to what we already got, send it back in and the board can review it.
If you guys need to figure out a more, a more iterative schedule between AKRF and me, go for it.
Happy holidays.
Yeah. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas to you all. All right. Any other comments, board members? All right. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Kim. Then a second. Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Good night.
Merry Christmas, yep.